All right, welcome to the Select Board meeting, February 22nd. And we will start as we usually do with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that moves us on to the roll call. Dave Hemway, Chair.
Marlo Herrick.
Norm DeLeite.
And announcements. Do we have any town announcements?
I have no announcements.
Do either of you have any announcements?
Nope.
No.
And since we happen to have one of them here, do you have any announcements for your folks?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'll move right along to the first appointment, which is the Pillsbury Lake Clubhouse. So come on down.
All right.
Let's see what we can do for you.
Want me to say my name or anything?
Sure.
Lisa Robinson, Chair of Pillsbury Lake Village District. So I'm just here because apparently we had gotten, I haven't seen it, but apparently we got a tax bill for the clubhouse. And as you know, we're, as a municipality, we don't pay taxes, so we don't even have something like that in our budget. So nor do I think we can put that in her budget, kind of like legally. So I think the bill may have originally supposed to have gone to maybe Pillsbury Lake Management. They owned it until August. We had tried for-
August of this year?
August of 2020.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, August of twenty twenty-one.
That's fine, that's fine.
Twenty twenty-two, aren't we?
It's all the weird changes.
Sorry, yes, twenty twenty-one. We were supposed to have it well before that. However, some things had come up with, we thought the financials were going to be coming with it so that we could run the clubhouse for the rest of the year. And documentation such as when the well was pumped, or when the septic was pumped last and things like that. We ended up not being able to get any of that, so we just took the clubhouse so that people could stop paying taxes on it. And because there was, I don't know if there was any money left in the HOA, I don't know, I wasn't part of that. And I haven't seen financials for that business that I guess is no longer in existence. They did not renew with Secretary of State, so I believe they are just completely dissolved because of that. So I'm not sure who the tax bill goes to, so I guess I'm just here at this point to see if we can get that abated at all because of the situation and kind of how it came about. We were supposed to have it back in, I think our meeting was March. So.
So the, the way that typically taxes would work for a transfer like that, whether, for example, we were buying a house or something of that nature, is in the agreement for the sale is usually that the purchaser or the seller is paying the prorated portion. So usually it would be, this was the estimated tax amount. The seller is going to credit you the prorated portion that you're expected to see on your bill, and then you would have to pay it. Obviously, being a municipality, then the district is not going to be getting charged after the fact. And so there may be an abatement or something that needs to happen for that if it was not already accounting for that. Like you said, it was August date that it was, the deed was transferred. But up until the point where the deed would transfer, those taxes stay with the property, not necessarily the owner. So those taxes would still be on the property from Pillsbury Lake Management. Even though any new taxes from that point forward would of course not accrue because of being the district. So what, do we know what actually went out as a, as a bill since she hasn't had a chance to see the specific bill?
Pillsbury Lake Management got the first bill. And I, it was changed on the computer and I thought the district got the second bill. The total due is $3,129. The tax year, as you know, is April 1 to March 31. So there is a period of 217 days that the Village District owns the property. The state law is, as the property stands, April 1st, I might just suggest to the board that you consider abating the taxes in view of the circumstances.
Yeah.
This is a very unusual, you know, where something turns from taxable to, and it's non-taxable rather than tax exempt, but non-taxable.
Well, especially if they don't have enough-
And there's no, if there's no money.
Oh, right, and the fact that, then we're gonna, if they don't pay, we're gonna take it, I mean. You know, you know, right? Because that adds what ends up happening. Feel free, yeah.
No offense, but we can't even get a permit to operate the downstairs. So we can only operate the upstairs because of how much damage is done to it. We've already spent a couple thousand dollars that we've had to take from other places because the heating went. And we spent several thousand dollars on that and there was a propane leak. So there was, there was a lot of bills that have already accrued because of that property. And now in our next, in our annual meeting, we have to ask the members for $30,000 just to fix what needs to be fixed. The electrical is not to code, there is asbestos in the tiles, there's severe water damage in the walls. So that's why we could not get a permit, permit to operate downstairs. I did want to say that it was of our understanding through the attorneys that all the bills were supposed to be paid up to date before we got it. So that was stated between all the attorneys. So, you know, and like I said, I don't, I can't, no one can get ahold of anybody from Pillsbury Lake Management anymore. I'm constantly getting emails for them now because there are several people that have liens on their properties from Pillsbury Lake Management, and I don't, I don't know what to tell them because I don't, I can't help them. I feel bad that they have liens on their properties from the HOA that I can't help them with.
Yeah, and you have an interesting situation there too without Pillsbury Lake Management. Because Pillsbury Lake Management is the entity that is required to do a lot of the oversight like an HOA would. Such as, you know, building requirements and that sort of thing and enforcement of it. So I'm not a lawyer, but I would certainly suggest talking to the district's lawyer to ask what recourse you have towards either previous management or the previous management company. And either, well, basically for all of it. Since you didn't get any of the documentation either that it sounds like was part of the agreed upon transfer.
Well, we decided to just not get the documents or anything and just get the clubhouse at that point because it had been so long that we had been waiting, everybody had already voted on it. Several times it was voted on to get the clubhouse. And, and so we just needed to get it done. So we finally just let go of the stuff that we were asking for and just said, just, just, can you please just give us the clubhouse? There's no money left, so you're gonna have to give it to us so we can start a budget for it and get it going again. And so that's kind of just where we are with it. So we had let that part of it go, so the only thing left would be the taxes. And I guess, yeah, if we can't get it, if we can't get the whole thing abated, I guess we would have to go through the lawyer because, I mean, that was the agreement. Like I said, I don't know, I mean, there's no one left for management, so there was just one person. And I can certainly read you the text that she wrote me, but I'd prefer not to because I don't think that it's appropriate.
So nobody's, no, there's no manager, so who's taking care of any of that Pillsbury, nothing, nobody's there? Why do they all disappear?
So management is over, now it's just the Pillsbury Lake Village District, just the municipality part, and I'm taking care of that at this point.
So do they hire you, or do you mean they hire, do they have-
We're elected, it's myself.
President, I'm sorry?
With, so we have a board.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, so it's myself, John Goodwin, and Allison Marks. Those two commissioners will be leaving, the clerk has left, the treasurer position, position is up in the air, and we don't have a moderator. So at this point, my position is the only one that's staying. So, and as we know, we've got all the water issues that I'm trying to deal with too. But it's, I don't know, we just had to turn down $600,000 in ARPA money because we have to get a loan on top of it for one and a half million just to finish Deer Meadow. There's no way. How is 63 customers supposed to pay that? I can't, we can't, so I don't know what else to do. So the only thing we're trying to do now is get a new well so we can stop using wells five and six, which is called the Peninsula. Because they have so much arsenic and manganese, it's very costly to treat those. So now the, what we'll be trying to do is get a new well to go on one system, the Franklin Pier system, and kind of just use that as a pump station and not the wells over there.
Wow, that sounds-
It is a lot, and we have a lot going on at this point. We're still trying to keep the community going and that's still our goal. But it gets harder and harder, I think, every year, especially with the water. But we have not had it shut down almost, almost since I've been on. So we've hired a new water company, which was the first big step.
Because a lot of people ended up getting their own wells too, so that's-
Oh, yes, at least, at least 60 homes got their own well. So we're down to about 63, maybe 62, I think I just heard another one go in. Luckily, last week I was hearing the truck somewhere, so.
Wow. Wish we could be more of help.
I know, I know, especially she has to turn down ARPA funds.
That's still, yeah. So, I mean, my, when we got the letter, and I wasn't part of the Cocker Drive project that was done by Ally Vasquez and John Goodwin, and I really didn't have kind of a lot of part in that, the application process. The paperwork stuff kind of isn't my thing. However, during that process, they had applied for the ARPA money. So when we got it, and, and I got the letter, my assumption is we could use that money, but I didn't realize that we also would have to either get a loan or use our own money for 60% of it, I believe. And then the other 40%, which is the 600,000, for the one and a half million dollars that it would take to complete Deer Meadow Water Main.
Wow.
And we just spent, just about $400,000 on Cocker Drive.
That's interesting because our, our ARPA funding didn't have a similar sort of-
Ours has a little caveat to it.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense to me because, but I mean-
It didn't mean either, I had to have an hour-long meeting with four people from DES because I was like, isn't this just-
You know, I understand if you're getting a DES grant loan combination, I get that. But the ARPA, I don't.
Yeah, ARPA shouldn't-
ARPA was just-
Unless maybe it's specific because-
It could be, yeah.
Maybe it's specific for a village district coming from the state.
It's specific for water systems.
Oh, okay.
It's specific to just water systems, and that particular grant could only be used on Deer Meadow Drive. It couldn't even be used on any other roads. So if we had a smaller road that we could complete for the 600,000, that's what I would have done. But we don't get any of it, so we had to turn it down and we'll try to reapply again in June for next year. Hopefully, some money will still remain in other places, I'm sure we'll have to do the same thing. And we'll just reapply and see if we can come up with something else or some more grants from somewhere. Because you can use more grant money instead of your own money. So that, that's probably what we're gonna try to be doing this year, is try to come up with more grant money to offset it somewhere.
And that's something, just to get grant money, you really need a grant writer to know. Because there's so many different things and so many caveats to every one of them.
And that's, that's where, like, I'm kind of falling behind.
Oh, yeah.
It's very hard, I look at the paperwork and it's, you know, it is a lot.
You've done really well to just even, I think. Because it is, there's a, when you, when you're talking about all that.
It's been a time-
Because a lot of even people that deal with it every day still don't totally get it.
Yeah, no, it is a lot. We do have a, a new person that has moved into the district. She is running for commissioner, and she's volunteering to help us out as clerk right now. And she seems to have a lot of grant experience.
Oh, awesome.
And she works for UNH, and so I think that she'll be a great addition, hopefully. I've kind of said, here's all the paperwork. And see if you can, she's gonna go into it and see if she can kind of figure some of that out. So at least we can at least work on the new well project for this year. So, you know, just having the sourced water and clean water. I can't, I mean, I, I think I'm going to take one of the filters and bring it into our annual meeting so people realize what I'm talking about, it's disgusting, I have to change it every week. It's a large pool filter.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I change it, me alone, I change it every week. And I buy them, I purchase them so that we can save money. Because it will cost us $250 just for the water operator to change them. And then they charge us $140 to buy them when I buy them for $106. And I change it myself for free.
Wow. You need a floor, well, yeah, floor end, yeah, whatever. You need someone with a lot of money to help you out.
Yeah, well, we're trying to save money, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to build it back and things like that. I mean, I've always wanted to come and see if there's anything that we can combine to try to save money. You know, little things like plowing. I mean, we only plow three things over there, you know, but we're paying, you know, a couple grand a year to plow. I mean, and we only plowed twice this year, you know, probably three times by Friday, but-
If you could just get a couple of volunteers to just do that on their roof.
Right, but we can. I do all the mowing, I do all the landscaping, I do all, I do all of that. I do all the mowing for the field, the rec field, I now do all the landscaping myself for the clubhouse.
You know, that's something that, I mean, if people would volunteer to do that and they'd get a lot of press, good advertising, since I'm in the advertising business, but that might be something you might want to think about.
It's hard, we do, we do put out to get volunteers.
I don't mean Pillsbury Lake, I mean other people that come around and plow and, and do all that kind of stuff. You know, they could put a few signs up or something like that.
Right.
Might be something you can work at.
Yeah.
But it's like, if you're by yourself, it's tough to do all that.
Right.
But I'd be glad to put any kind of notice in the paper in a month if you want, you know, volunteers.
Yeah, and we've, we have done that, we've put it in our, in our, you know, our minutes, volunteers needed for, you know, anything, play, the playground updates, you know, all of that stuff. You know, we've got the baseball field, probably 90% finished. We have a little flooding issue on that side, so I may have to get some assistance with telling me what next I need to do over there. But that's all been stipend money, I didn't take a single dime. And neither did the rest of the board. We've all used our stipends that we get from Pillsbury Lake. We put it all towards the playground equipment and the new basketball court and the new baseball field and the new soccer nets.
And of course, with this COVID stuff, you can't have anything, you know, for public and all that, so.
Yeah, we haven't really had anything at the clubhouse.
For a couple of years.
They had one thing at Halloween, they were able to do one thing. But we decided not to do the Christmas stuff when things kind of got-
Oh, yeah, right.
Again, so.
So like, with, with, with all these, you know, with the field and stuff, is that stuff that you can like rent out?
Rent out?
Yeah, rent out to people?
We let everyone use it, I mean.
Well, what I mean by that is, you know, is everybody's always looking for someplace to have a family outing or something. Is that, would that be a money source of some kind?
Yeah, so the clubhouse, once we get that more up to code, yeah, we can rent that out. And that is our goal, to rent it out. But it needs a lot of work and stuff. And, and so that, that is something that we will do, is we'll rent that out, but-
But what a neat, what a neat thing that we could say, we're gonna have a little family outing and gonna play a little baseball and then we're gonna have a little building to go to.
They do, it's all, it's all, like, there, there is a sign up there that says Pillsbury Lake residents only. There's one sign on the, sign on the fields, but only because we were having a really big issue with the neurological place. We had some issues, so we did put up a sign. It's generally, we didn't really say it was gonna be a permanent sign, it's just up for now just because we had an issue with the residents yelling at some of the children, and one of them was mine and I was there. So it was a really hard thing to do was to put up that sign because we want it to be used for everyone, not just any Webster resident that wants to come, or anybody actually that wants to come. You know, it's the same with the lake, there's no, there's no restrictions on the lake, it's access to everybody, everybody can use it. So I've lived here 17 years, I've never even been on the lake. I like to kayak one a pocket.
But that's, but it is, I mean, a lake is, is a good thing to have in this town. We're lucky to have lakes and water and stuff like that, so. And I know they used to do a lot of things before COVID.
They did, yeah.
So obviously, we can talk a lot about Pillsbury and we all want to help them out, but let's go back to the business at hand, which is the taxes. This was, was it for basically the eight or nine months that PLM owned it before giving it to them that they were taxed on?
Right now, what is on the books is the entire 21 tax year.
Okay. So-
Which is $3,129.
So at a minimum, it would be, it would be appropriate to abate since, once they took the deed, once the deed happened so that they took property.
That would be $1,800, you're giving, $1,877.
The, because it's odd for, like, I don't even know how we would try to pay taxes if we had something happen like that for the town. We probably, we've got the contingency fund maybe, but-
Oh, yeah, we do, because we're a little bigger.
But, yeah, that's not something that they would have to, to handle with that. So what do you think?
I make a motion to waive the tax.
To do the abatement?
Yeah, do the abatement, sorry.
For the entire amount?
Yep.
Yeah, I would too, I mean, it's part of the town, there's a lot of good people.
Especially where they're trying to make it so that it can be kind of like what we're sitting in right now. I mean, not every town can say, oh, hey, I could have a nice little function and, and, yeah, no.
I've been to a lot of nice functions in that place, that's, you know, it's really a nice place, nice smaller place to have, and it's beautiful looking over the lake and everything, so.
So we have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
So if I could have signatures, I'll have the ticket.
Thank you.
Well, good luck, my god.
Appreciate it, anything, no, anything else.
Being a resident and moving in there and then having, yeah. I mean, it's one thing when you need to replace your well, like, when you buy a place and you have, you know.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's tough because, I mean, even our, just our taxes, I pay $1,900 more in taxes just because I live in Pillsbury Lake.
Yeah.
So it is rough, but, you know, we're gonna try to keep going and-
Well, and that is to handle the Village District and the tax overlay for the water system, which is what allowed Pillsbury Lake to be created in the first place.
Right, yeah, unfortunately, because the private well owners now outweigh the 63 water users. It's very hard to get anything passed, as you know, to try to help the water users. So the new well, the, it will be to, you know, to everyone in the district and not just the water users because they're already, you know, I mean, we have people that pay $500 every three months for water. And that's not even including the Cocker Drive project yet. So, so that, that's the tough part of it, and, and so, I don't know. I mean, we're just gonna try to keep going and we'll see what happens next month.
And if you have any other projects like Conquer, where, you know, you're planning on ripping the whole thing up, let us know so we can work with you for the road again.
Yeah, we absolutely will do that, yeah, we will definitely try to do that.
Does the neuro place have their own well?
They, they, yeah, they do. Yeah, they're not even part of Pillsbury Lake, which I'm not really sure how that is because they're at the end of-
Because they're at, that was private property way up there.
Yeah, they're outside the district, but you can't get to it without going through the district.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, so it's very interesting.
I remember when they sold that land, the people that owned it all lived on Deer Meadow, on Deer Meadow Road.
Right.
So, yeah, that was an interesting-
I don't think we've had any, we haven't had any complaints from residents recently anyway, so.
That's good, that's awesome.
Hopefully, things are better and more controlled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, that moves us on to our second appointment, which is for town meeting preparation.
So good evening, thank you for taking a few minutes to sit down. I actually want to talk about both Election Day and town meetings, so we have sort of the two events. So we can just start quickly on, on March 8th. I've met with our town clerk and we've kind of discussed the procedures. Our plan is to hold town elections pretty much as normal as we can. We are gonna discourage other activities in the halls. So we're just gonna have people come in, vote, and then leave. We're not gonna have, you know, all sorts of other activities, and we really don't want people lingering to have conversations. We're gonna chew them out the door as quickly as we can so that we can keep this, you know, as, as clean as possible for the voting environment. You know, the, the requirement in terms of masking, we're gonna highly recommend that masks be worn, but it'll be up to each individual to decide what they want to do. And by moving people through quickly with the windows open and the ceiling fans on and so forth, we feel that we can conduct a safe, efficient election. As you know, the absentee balloting is still available for folks who are nervous, and Michelle is in the process of sending absentee ballots out. And so one change in the law, we're not able to pre-process those. So we are gonna have to be very efficient that day to process the absentee ballots that day, and we're gonna start right at noon. So we will post it, we're gonna start doing those at 12 o'clock. So everybody knows that we want to make sure that we get through what we have in hand. So that's basically the plan. One reminder for the Select Board, you are required to be here that day. And so if you're not able to be here the whole day, I'll send you an email and we'll just, you know, you can appoint a Select Board member pro tem to be here in your capacity, just to make sure that we have everything we need. So I wanted to see if there were questions from the Select Board or town regarding the Voting Day on Tuesday, March 8th.
You, or somebody in, in elections had mentioned that the checklist folks did not want to be inside for that. Is there a difference from the last election that we held for locations?
So first, I'm hearing that. I've invited, I've invited the supervisors, but I have not heard that concern, so I'll, I'll do a follow-up to find out. But they have not attended, we've had two meetings, Michelle and I have had two meetings so far, and they have not expressed that concern, so I'll do a double check on it.
Okay.
I'm sure we can find a way if, if that question gets raised. But the ballot clerks, I've reached out to folks who have experience and a few have said, a few have declined participating because they're concerned, but others have said they're willing to do it. So we'll, and we built up a really good list of volunteers last time, so I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to staff it. We won't have anywhere near as many stations at this point with, you know, we have plenty of PPE available. Hand sanitizer, we're well stocked on, masks, we're well stocked on. So, you know, we have stuff that we can make available to folks that day to feel comfortable getting in and casting their ballot and doing the democratic thing.
And it ran like clockwork last time, so I can't imagine it not doing the same thing this time. They did a great job, the people that worked there did a great job.
Yeah, thank you, I, there were, I mean, the boatload of volunteers was just phenomenal, and so everybody just had their system down. I feel pretty confident the same will occur this year. And this is different, I mean, no, no offense, it's a town election as opposed to a presidential election. So a little bit different in terms of how people may come out. So we're anticipating maybe 500 or 600 voters as opposed to 1,200 plus that we had last time, so. Any, anything else about that? I do think, I, I think the other piece is that stationing somebody at the door to sort of limit, if we're gonna have a line, it's probably better to have a line outside than a line inside. Again, just so that we can number of active voters and just get people in and out. But I, I don't anticipate it being quite the same. You know, we had a line at 8 o'clock last year, I don't think we're gonna have a line at 11 when we open, so for 10. I'm not sure when they open, I should know that. Great, then I'll, I'll forward an email out, it's gonna be coming in the next few days, just sort of asking for the volunteers and signing up for shifts and so forth, so we'll get that out to you.
Speaking of the volunteers, that reminds me, and I'll give you a prompt to do the call-out. Do you need anybody for ballot counting?
Yes, so same thing, I'm gonna be soliciting people to be ballot counters. We think that four teams of two will accomplish that. We think that four teams of two will accomplish that task at the end of the night. You know, the select board ends up staying through that also, because you gotta sign off on the boxes at the end, right? So although I don't know if it's exactly the same on a town vote or not, but I like to keep the procedures as normal as we can. So if there are folks who are interested in helping with that, send me an email, and I'll, you know, as, as I said, I think I've got thirty-five people at this point, but you can always take more.
If you want to do something like that, let our town administrator know, and he can make sure that Mike knows.
Yep, and I will, you can also email me directly at thejennifamily@gmail.com, and I will take that, take that information, and we'll be in touch. All right, so shifting gears then to town meeting. So we've talked about town meeting and sort of are coming at it with a similar approach to really minimize the activity in the hall to be the conduct of the town meeting and not to have a variety of different groups. If there are folks who have other tasks that they want to complete before or after, we will try to have that conducted outside perhaps, or, you know, we can, like, as we end town meeting, get people on their way, and then if they want to sign up for a fire permit or other things, there'll be an opportunity to do those at, at town meeting day. At this point, you've, you've posted it for Saturday, right, so that is when town meeting will be. I attended the moderator training last week, and they made it very clear under one of the RSA's that the masking question is actually the moderator's fault, that the moderators are expected to follow the building owner's wishes in terms of masking requirements, but then the moderator can determine what the right procedure is relative to safety. Having watched proceed, watched other towns on the news, there have been a lot of disturbances related to the masking, and I think, I'm, I'm looking for your help, I'm trying to figure out what the right balancing point is, because I don't want to disenfranchise anybody. It's never been my intent to disenfranchise, and so we want to run that meeting and have everybody be as comfortable as possible. I've had emails from folks who say, you know, if you make it mandatory, that's gonna be a problem. And I've had people say, I'm not comfortable attending meeting if everybody's not masked. So what I am proposing as a compromise solution is that we highly recommend masks upstairs, but let people make their own individual choice. And we provide a downstairs location for folks, that we do make mask required. And so that if there's somebody who really feels uncomfortable being in an environment with unmasked folks, they're able to participate equally from down there.
And how would that work?
And what I would propose is that we find a way, and I'm gonna ask David for help as the tech guru on this.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, I, I'm proposing as simple as a Google Meet, where we have a projector here. I, I would propose that we set everybody up on the floor, we have a projector streaming on the screen, and that anybody downstairs, we have a deputy moderator down there who can let me know that somebody wants to speak, they're able to get in front of the computer screen and be recognized into the room. And likewise, they're able to see a stream of speakers in the room. So they see what's going on up here, we can hear, and they can participate from down there. Vote tallies can be taken and recorded separately between the two rooms. It's not unlike what other towns did. I mean, there were towns last year, like Bowhead, classrooms of people that they were all trying to coordinate, and, you know, they, they were able to pull it off. I think we can pull off two locations in the same building. So, you know, if there's a communication issue or whatever, it's just as easy as running downstairs to see what's going on, right? So I don't, I don't think it's a burden. But I think it's a way to make sure, because, I mean, a few elderly people said, I am not gonna come and sit, I'm not doing it in my life, I'm not going out to stores, I'm not doing these things yet, I'm not comfortable. But I want to participate in town meeting, because I've already done that. And so to me, this is a compromise, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are on it, because it is an extra, an extra responsibility to set up the space, but I think it's the right thing to do to make sure everybody feels able to be involved.
I mean, granted, somebody doing it, but I absolutely think it's, I think it's fantastic that we could do something like that, you know, that we have the space to do it, and, and that makes, you know, people feel comfortable either way, you know? Because, yeah, I think, trying to tell somebody what to do in, in either one of those situations, this is just not gonna work. I mean, so it's, it's a very awesome idea, I think.
I, I think it's.
Can, can, can we make it happen, can?
I think it's the right idea, I'm, I'm trying to think of the, the best way to try and make it possible. I think it's probably the easiest way for it to be set up would be that we would have a normal broadcast and stream like we would normally do any meeting, and that would display downstairs via anything that's connected to the internet. And that would be on one screen down there someplace with its own audio. The, and that, that should be fairly easy. The more challenging part is managing an extra mic down there for if they want to speak, and then allowing that to show up to everybody here, and especially to be able to get feedback, because there will be some sort of delay for whatever happens here to be seen down there. And so we could certainly set up some sort of, whether it's FaceTime or Zoom or whatever, between computers for up here and down there. But trying to make it, try, trying to, I guess that would be, we'd have to set it up as like a display that would be like, maybe it's a display behind the, the standard mic section for people to, to come ask their questions or make their comments. So when someone stands up in the video, you can recognize as the moderator whether it's that person that's gonna speak or the person that's at the mic right in front of them in the, in the room that would speak, and just kind of manage the flow that way. And I guess we would have somebody like Russ just mute and unmute that connection when it's time for that person to, to speak, so that we don't have feedback from the, the streaming loop.
Well, and you'll be running it up here, in a sense, right?
Right.
So he'll, you, you would notice, say, oh, timeout for a minute.
I, I mean, I, I was thinking that if I had the, so whatever's being projected for everybody in the room to see, but I had it in front of me, so I could turn them off or on. And, you know, basically, somebody sits down, and I'm like, okay, there's two people in line, there's a third person in line, you know? And just so that they know, you know, but again, we could have somebody else monitoring that. It's, it's really just a matter of keeping the flow and making sure that we're recognizing it.
Well, yeah, it, it would still be the moderator doing that, but like, when you say, okay, it's gonna be video person Y, that would be the, the cue for somebody like Russ or somebody, whoever,
Turn them on.
to unmute them, so that we didn't have feedback issues.
I didn't even think about the feedback, David, but, so actually, if I, if I may, what is the plan for the camera? I mean, we, we're set up for this projection, but unless we have the speakers coming here, how, how do we plan to do the streaming and recording?
So what has happened in past years when we had the one that's up in the ceiling, is it was all done on, towards one corner, and then either you could see the back of the person or they came up kind of next to the, the board or whatever when they were speaking. And so I, I was expecting that we'd probably set up towards a corner similar to the way that, that has been done in the past, and then just take this camera and move it a little bit further out that way to, to do that. I'd love to have it mounted in the ceiling, but I don't think it'll happen by then. So most likely, it'll be this similar setup closer to where that window is, where, which is where it's connected to the internet.
Got it.
And so aimed over towards this corner.
Yeah, so we'll think about that with setup in terms of where we do it. And then I just think wherever the mic is, you know, somebody, as long as somebody's in the video, so they see him downstairs in the public, there'll be somebody watching at home who still won't come, or, you know, get recorded that way.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, and we can, I mean, I know you tend, you have tended to use the, the podium as moderator, but we can set up either a table or a podium or, or something of that nature for whoever's gonna speak, if, if we think there's gonna be more than just, you know, the two or five-minute or whatever comment period for things. But I think, with the exception of maybe the petition warrant article, I don't, which, we can just invite them to come up at the table with us.
Sure.
With the exception of that, I don't think there, I would expect any particularly long speeches, so.
Are you, are you comfortable on the floor? So in the past, the select board has been on the stage, it gives a little more visibility. But if we use the projector, I mean, I guess the other thing is we could set up a screen on the side to project if we want to be on the stage. So we just want to think our way through that setup and not show up Saturday morning and say, how are we doing it, so.
Oh, wait, that's way more fun.
I'm personally comfortable with any of the, the ways, I, I don't.
Whatever's fine by me.
Yeah, because I think the screen is right behind the curtain, isn't it? It's like in the front, so.
So we're over there.
And, yeah.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, if we set up kind of in the corner with moderator just on the other side or between us and the stage, and then the, I mean, that's a really large screen for random person coming up to speak, but if that's what we're gonna use, that's fine. But then the mic right in front of it, basically, for the person that comes up to, to come here, I, I don't see a problem with that. Any other thoughts on?
Hey, it's been running fine all these years, and I, you know, I assume keep it going that way, and I'm not an IT person at all, so you guys are doing a great job.
You mentioned having a, a deputy moderator that would have to be down there for counts and stuff anyway. The other option is for the participatory act portion, for example, if the technology fails partway through, we don't want to have to, like, end the meeting. So the other way that we might be able to handle that is if you're coordinating off downstairs, it would still be coming in through here and then going downstairs. Because we could set up a, a second mic basically at the back of the room. And a deputy moderator could tell you, I've got someone coming up to the mic. And that way, they get up, they stand at the back with an open door, and in theory, that should be okay too.
Yep, we, we can offer that.
Because we've got wireless mics, we should definitely make sure that that's ready in case.
It's, it's gonna depend on a person's comfort. I mean, there are just, people are all across the spectrum with how they feel about this. And so there are some folks who definitely are not even gonna want to walk in the hall. And I just think we have to be sensitive to that and find a way. I'm also thinking of some of the elderly, you know, making them come upstairs.
That's the only thing I would say to, yeah.
Might be a problem, but we'll, again, we'll find a way to make sure that we get everybody checked in and know who's here, they're town residents, we'll, you know, do all the traditional stuff with their bracelets and so forth, and be as accommodating as we can with it. And then now with the parking lot paved, I think getting in down below should be a lot easier for folks. So, but again, we'll, we'll make sure that we can manage that. I would say only, you know, we have to allow the public, if there's somebody who wants, the media wants to show up, I mean, they have to be allowed in. But I don't know that they have to be in the mask-only section too.
Right.
And, you know, I was disheartened when I saw one of the stories on the news, because the moderator had set up a mask optional section and a mask required section, trying to accommodate this. And the people who were arrested by the police and hauled out were maskless, sitting in the mask required section. And, you know, they just said, you, you can't make me put a mask on. And I thought, oh my gosh, you know, is this really what we're gonna? I would like to think in Webster that that doesn't happen if we have a downstairs section, but, you know, again, it's being provided to make sure nobody feels disenfranchised. And I just appeal to everybody's greater graces, like, it's not required up here, come upstairs without your mask, it's okay. But please keep the downstairs for the folks who are wishing that.
A second thought for you, rather than downstairs, which might make it even easier for the mic and not require the extra technology portion, other than just a, a stream. The library currently is, is masks, and depending on how many people you expect of that, you might be able to talk to the library trustees for opening the library for masked folks.
Easier for them to get in.
And then they have their own ventilation, their own room, anyone can still walk straight in, and then there's a door right there to grab a mic. And so they can be visible just like, and participate just like everyone else, without anyone else saying they're getting, you know, special treatment because they're on a screen and don't have to face people, et cetera, et cetera. Which hopefully, no one here would, would say, but, you know, stranger things in politics, especially these days.
That's a good idea, Dave, I think the library, because I don't think there's that many people. Well, I don't know who knows, way things go, but that can hold quite a few people.
Yeah, it's all the same, wouldn't you think?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm spacing it out, I mean, the library, because there's just tables and stuff, so it feels smaller when I think about it in my head.
Right.
But it might not actually be that much smaller when you really weigh it out.
And a little bit more comfortable, actually, in a sense.
And honestly, if we have a good feed in there and, you know, people are able to space out in between the stacks and so forth, you know, I, I, I'm thinking of an open space, right? We want an open space, but we don't have to have that, as long as people can see in here. So let me explore that, that's a good suggestion. And I kind of like the idea, I mean, we open the curtain, and they're just presenting from the doorway. So they're, they're technically in the room by just stepping in.
Because if we did that, for example, we could just be at the back of the stage. Everybody would be here, they would be in there, and then it's just, the door is open.
Yeah, yeah, let me explore that, that's a, that's a really good suggestion. So who's in charge? That's the library trustees?
That would be the library trustees.
Marty Bender's.
Marty would probably be the easiest one to contact with them.
And who else is it? Is Nancy?
Nancy, Tom French.
Yep, okay.
And Leslie Collins.
Thank you. Let me, let me see what I can do, because I, I, I actually, logistically, I just think that sounds and feels better, so.
Yeah, it's a lot easier, because then technology's not involved. And as much as we're trying to be accommodative with mask versus not, a lot of people are also intimidated by the technology aspects.
Yep.
Plus, it's easier, well, handicap can move around, because we got, we have the door right here too.
Unless you might be able to look at a good look at things.
It's boring.
Well, everybody's over here knitting, so. And again, I think it's just appealing to the, the better angels of town, that, look, this is being provided.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and we, we thank you for all your thinking and thoughts of it, because, yeah, not everybody thinks the same way as we all do, you know? And you're just trying to, or we're all trying, as you suggested, I mean, but it's, I think it's pretty cool, actually, if I could use that not very intelligent word.
I'll take it. It will be cool when we open all the windows.
Yeah, yeah.
You never know, though.
No, and it, and you could, you know, some of the feedback from last year, the little bit you heard, and I don't mean, I just mean people having their opinions, you're really just trying to make everyone happy. And at this point, I think you've done a good full circle, and if somebody's not happy after that, then it's just, it's like anything.
I'm still trying to get to school to fix the ventilation system in there, so the children at lunch can actually talk to each other. Remember how loud that thing was?
Hasn't changed in a lot, since my older kids went to school, so.
They did do some updates in there, but I, I don't think it was to the ventilation. I think it was to what's driving the heating of the ventilation.
Yes, but that fan was so loud.
Oh, the day of the town meeting, yeah, 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 yeah.
And we had a small school meeting over there back in the fall, winter, and it was, oh my god, rattling. We had to move out of the room, you couldn't have a conversation in the room, it was terrible. All right, I think that covers everything I had. The other piece is, just in the interest of efficiency, I am gonna ask the select board to move and second every motion. I know it's slightly less engaging with the public, but Michelle has to have a definite name recorded for a motion and a second, and it just speeds things up, like, we're not, I mean, they're your warrant articles anyway. So I think if we just know, motion's made by Dave, seconded by D, Dave speaking to it, because he made the motion, and we just line that up as part of, we still get all the debate, it doesn't limit it anyway, but it.
Which way do you want to handle that? I've seen both, this is the article, we're gonna discuss it, and then a motion. And I've also seen you make a motion about the article and then discuss it before taking a vote. Which way do you want, which order do you want to do that?
What I would prefer is that we read the warrant article, and then the motion is made by the primary sponsor or speaker to it. So if you're gonna be the primary talker on the damn warrant article, then you make it, somebody else. So if you're going to be the primary talker on the damn warrant article, then you make it, somebody else seconds it, it doesn't matter. Michelle can now record in the minutes because the state came out and said, you have to have the name of the person who moved and seconded the motion. And so she said, when you call from the audience, just sometimes I miss who made the second, because you hear five people yell out, second.
Right.
So she said, you really need to have somebody say it. I said, I'm going to make it even easier, I'm just going to ask the select board to do it because it's their warrant articles anyway, right?
It's usually traditional for the board to do that anyway, for your, for your articles.
I think normally it has been for the first, but not necessarily the second in, in Webster, but, yeah.
We did it last year to streamline it, and I just am going to encourage us to stay with that practice. And then if there's a motion and a second from the floor to change it, I'll make sure that we know who made the second, they can identify themselves. So that Michelle has that for the minutes.
Absolutely, yeah.
But those are amendments as opposed to just the order of business, which I think if we can stick with you doing that, it'll make it easier.
That's fine.
All right, so we'll work on that as we get closer. I think last year, although Dana already seems to have it sort of framed out, so we'll make sure that we have it recorded there so we know.
Okay.
You do a great job, so, I mean, we are lucky, we are lucky to have you and the people that are under, that you're in charge of and all. It works out great, I'm so proud of this town.
Having a lot of it actually engaged is awesome.
It's, it's a whole team, to be clear.
Wonderful.
You know, we've had an interest, it's been with the school district. So another plug I just want to make is that the school district now is streamlining their processes. So they've learned that the ballot clerks can't be, I'm sorry, supervisors of the checklist who are there to register new voters cannot also serve as ballot clerks because it's on the list of conflicted offices or whatever. So we actually had to send two more ballot clerks in to work at the polls. And, you know, that led to quite a dialogue because it says the moderator does this, finds these and appoints them. And I'm like, well, wait a second, that's Charlie, that's not this moderator, it's that moderator, because it's a different moderator for the school. So I did help Charlie out to find people because I, you know, I want to be accommodating, but I also wasn't going to step on toes with it. So, you know, they just keep refining all these laws and clarifying things. And, you know, just when you think you've done it the same, you've done it the same way for four years and all of a sudden you can't, you have to make a modification. So we try our best to stay on the front end of it. But if anybody has any concerns, let us know, because we are truly trying to make everything as engaging as we can. You know, I'm confident, I, I stand a hundred percent, every vote in Webster was counted, it was counted accurately. We follow all the processes, it's pen and paper, it's old school, but it works. We're announcing actual results, I mean, there's, anybody who wants to come and watch, it's a public process. And it's really, it's democracy in action at the end of the day, so, and we'll keep at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's anything else, let me know. I did quick math sitting there. If we put a $20,000 well in the 63 houses, it would cost 1.2 million dollars and the whole problem solved, just saying.
Except they can't all actually get wells. But yes.
Simple answer.
Some people over there have tried and wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Did you want to give a quick plug about the current school voting and like when their dates and stuff are?
Yeah, so a quick plug for the public, the school district meeting is on Friday, March 4th. Voting takes place between, I think it's 11 and 7:00 PM, and then the annual meeting will start at 7:00 PM. That's at the Merrimack Valley High School auditorium. I don't know their status on masking, that'll be a separate set of rules, that's for their moderator to decide. I'm sure it will be announced and published. My goal is to write a brief summary, Dee, I'm going to get it to you in advance of the deadline so that you can publish sort of
Oh, good, yep.
A summary of what we just talked about, so people know what's going on.
Thank you very much.
One thing I, I do want to say is that in trying to find ballot clerks, I had somebody who said to me, oh, well, I can't be the ballot clerk for the school district because I'm not a registered school district voter, just a town voter. And that really opened my eyes to a lack of understanding that voters have.
That was a long time ago when they had to be in two separate things, because I know, I was on the school board then, so, you changed that.
I'm going to write an article for the, for the newspaper.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
There, well, no, for the Conker Monarch, for the paper too, but, you know, I, I think it's important that people understand. There are over 10,000 registered voters in the Merrimack Valley School District when you add them all up. And I think last year, we had eight residents of Webster who participated in the meeting. Now, it was a COVID year, I get it, I couldn't go, I was actually positive at the time, I wasn't able to go, I was quarantined. But it's just remarkable to me that a $41 million budget has eight people from town participating on it. When we have a budget of a million dollars or a million and a half, whatever it adds up to, and we fill the room. And so I just, I, I think there's just a misunderstanding, so I want to just help people understand.
Yeah, that's great, no, awesome.
People can participate, and, you know, that's when that school district meeting will be, so I'd encourage people to go. And the other piece is, it's really refreshing to see that there are so many contested school board seats, which hasn't happened in a long time.
Yeah, that's surprised me, that's for sure.
So I encourage people to learn about the candidates and participate in that process too. It's not, it's not Webster, but it is Webster, so you guys should be encouraging it.
It's the largest part of our taxes, by far.
Yeah, really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, that will move us on to our last appointment. For Guideboard Hill Road, come on down.
Hey, happy Tuesday, everyone.
Well, you too.
Thank you. No, my, my. Okay, I'll go real fast because I know it's getting late, it's dark out there waiting. Basically, we, in the beginning, when I first came to the, this board, asking help for the road. Dave, you mentioned about a fire lane, yes?
I know a fire lane was mentioned, I don't.
Yes, okay, well, anyway, real quick, did a little homework, yada, yada. Looking for, to maybe do that route, get some gravel. I'm going to offer, if we can get Emmett to deliver some gravel, I'll, I'll spread it, especially on top of the hill. Is that something, it's on the?
So I, I think what you're trying to talk about is the emergency access lane.
Okay.
Typically, that is put forth by either the road agent and/or, usually and, but, or the, the police chief. As to, we need to be, we need to have additional maintenance just to make sure that we can get our side by sides in there if something happens. The key to note for an emergency access lane of that nature, for example, like Chadwick Hill and that sort of thing, is that it is not to, it does not bring a road up to standard passenger car passability standards. It's, can I get a four wheeler in and out? If the answer is yes, there's basically no maintenance that gets done. And like with those, they're class six roads and that's why we can't do anything beyond that, because we're not allowed to spend on them. So as far as can we get you, you know, a bunch of gravel and then let you work on it, unfortunately, the answer is legally no.
Okay.
For the emergency access lane, the best bet would be to talk with Emmett and the chief and, well, I should say the road agent and the police chief and see what they think. I know the police go down through there. If they're having problems getting in and out of there, then.
As we know, not to cut you off.
I know that you're maintaining it, so they're not.
No, 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 it's, it's just the public goes down there too. You know what I'm saying? Because like we, I said before, not to sound like a broken record, it's recreation down there.
Yep.
Okay.
But, you know, being a class six, we even, whether it's public or not, whether it's federal lands or not, we're, we're not allowed to put money into that road. So the answer, if you're trying to get maintenance done.
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking for gravel, just to make it so. Because right now on top of the hill, it's just like a funnel, and the water's running down in the middle. And so I have not personally put gravel on top of the hill in eight, nine years now. And it's starting to take a hole and it's going to, anyway, you don't need to hear that. I'm just trying to do something because I'm not going to be able to get in and out. You know, because with the, with the traffic, yada, yada. And the fact, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't the fact that it's a public, you know, there's got to be something. Before I leave, there's got to be something, you know, as far as, I don't want to leave here and just be empty handed. I mean, outside of talking to the, the chief, explain that, I got to talk to the chief and the road agent?
Well, so as far as, as far as the emergency lane, emergency access lane, that would be talk with them and get them to suggest that to the board and what the reasons are for the, the safety aspects. And then we would be able to look at it, possibly adopting it as that lane and how much maintenance they could or could not do as a result of that. Similar to the previous.
I mean, I got a, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, I just have a unique situation. Is there any other than what you're talking about? I'm just asking.
There, there certainly could be, I don't happen to know of any others other than going to get it adopted as a classified road by the, by the people at town meeting.
Right. We talked about that, okay, all right, I don't want to.
Does anybody else have a?
Well, what, I know, we, what, we've never found out anything about what, what happened between when the government put the dam in. Does, have we ever found any paperwork on that? Must have some kind of.
We have a lot of paperwork, but nothing that really relates to the road per se.
To them taking care of the road or anything?
No.
Really?
It's all more or less the real estate transactions. And, and there was a lot going on because the center of the town was down there.
Well, yeah, originally, yeah, yeah. But I just was wondering, because if there's a fire there, you know.
But it never, there was nothing that I saw that related to any roads at all.
Because the original, the original roads, I guess, are more washed away.
It just talked about roads that were no longer public roads.
Yeah.
I did send letters to Andy Custer's office and also Senator Hassan's office. Now, I don't know how long it takes, if I'll ever hear anything or if I won't, but I haven't heard anything.
Same here, I haven't, yeah, they haven't returned my calls either.
But as far as records, Dee, I didn't see anything that related to who is going to be responsible for. And I don't know if that recreation area was thought of in those days.
Nope.
Probably not.
No, it's roughly about 10 years ago before they put the signs up.
Yeah.
Well, I just, because I know the road agent Salisbury takes care of the roads.
Right.
That, they do that, and I thought, matter of fact, I should.
I did call Salisbury.
Oh, yeah, and what did he say?
They don't, they, I talked with Mr. McDuffie.
Yeah.
And he says, no, they don't get any money from the dam.
So they just do it.
For that, he, he does it, I guess, at request occasionally, but not as a matter of.
What a nice guy.
And I don't know whether he meant, you know, he's also in business for himself, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I, yeah, right, exactly.
I may have that mixed up.
I mean, those roads are pretty good to travel through if you're going to sneak through that part anyway.
You're talking about the roads that, when you go down.
If you want to go through Salisbury, go to Warner or from Webster, you know, yeah, those, those roads aren't too bad, really, so. I don't know, I don't know, I mean, when.
I wonder if he was thinking of that when I was talking to him, because I wasn't, I was thinking something else, but.
I'm just wondering when, who keeps.
But there are homes on there, and I don't know if that's actually government.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that those are probably classified dirt roads.
But I, I just wonder, I mean, the, the roads even in Webster are always taken care of in behind there. I mean, when you go down like off of 127, the road before you go on the big hill there. That's, that's always taken care of.
Cogswell Woods Road or whatever.
I don't know what the heck the name is, yeah. So why do they take care of that and not your road? I just don't understand that.
Is it the federal government taking care of it or?
I have no idea. I assumed the federal government, see, we used to have, the guy that was in charge of that, he used to live in town. So, and I know he did it because I, you know, I did stories about him and everything, I mean, this is, you know, the years and the years ago. So that's why, but now that road always seems to be in good shape. I mean, people go there all the time, they, you know, and you can drive down there and with a regular car, really.
And that's interesting, because that's also, I think there's picnic tables there.
Yeah, there's picnic tables in there somewhere because.
Habaaches, yeah.
Did they use your road to get to?
Used it on the class six road, yes.
Because I walk there all the time.
I'm, I'm sure the answer is yes, but probably not going to get a response. But can, can we send a request to the, the, the federal department involved, request that somebody come to a meeting?
We could try it.
We've had somebody, we did have somebody come when I was a selectman the first time, because Mr. Drown had his cows there. So he had, so we did have somebody there to talk about that.
At least that should give us an appropriate more local contact.
Mr. Potter and I spoke with a representative from Franklin.
Correct.
Okay.
But she was just stepping in for the one we needed to talk to, yeah.
I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll reach out to them again.
Okay.
See what we can do.
So I have a question.
Yes.
When, which I should drive out there, but your drive, it's your driveway to get to your home, in a sense, right? But it's also a public way, is there a parking spot past your driveway that is there for public to use?
It goes right down to the, behind the dam.
Okay.
You can drive right down to the grassy area behind the dam on the, on the, well, if you're looking at the dam, it's on the left hand side.
I was just thinking even like the, the idea of stone build trails and all the maintenance that is done for those are, you know, grants, you know, block grants. Is that, is that something that would even fit in what, in what you're saying if there's actual recreational, you know, usage? You know, there's, you know, I know a lot of stone build clubs get grants for the, you know, groomers and material and play on the trails.
Right, they come on the other side, they don't even, you know, only the people in the neighborhood who have steam builds, they drive down. But it's usually the, the club puts a sign, do not go up this way.
Yeah.
So they, most of them come in, when the water's frozen, they'll, they'll hop over the river and go on the other side.
Right, right, yes, I know where you're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as far as, to answer your question, you said parking.
When you say they use it, what do you mean, this is people just do whatever they want, they are accessing, because they're not even, four wheelers and stuff aren't even supposed to be on federal lands anyways, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
From Little Hill Road.
Yeah.
You go up approximately, I don't know, a couple thousand feet, and it's a sharp right, Guideboard Hill Road, Bob's, Salmo's right there.
Yeah, 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 I know where we are, yeah.
If you go down that road, and there's three houses, two log cabins on the, on the end. And approximately from my driveway down there is probably, I don't know, 150, 180 feet where the, the gates are.
Yes.
So what people do is they pack in front of the gate when the gate goes.
Because there is, there's grills and picnic tables down there too.
Right.
Yeah. I just wonder if there would be some kind of, you know, grants for accessing trails that, that, that the state would, that you could, that we could either, we could apply for or he could apply for. Maybe it wouldn't be us, I guess it would be you.
I, I don't think that would classify as a path or a trail, you know, I mean, it's.
But they got picnic tables and somebody's to maintaining that.
Right. Well, I just thought of something, we talked about a sign, can we at least put a sign, pass at home risk, maybe it'll deter some of the traffic? Because every other place is marked as class six, pass at, you know, home risk.
If we're doing a class six, pass at home risk signs in other class sixes, that would make perfect sense to me. I don't recall seeing that right around the corner from me, or Garrish. But if we are doing that other places, we should do that here. Whatever we're doing, we should do everywhere.
At least it'll be something than nothing.
I still think we need somebody from the, the, whatever that, the dam controllers to be here at a meeting.
Yeah, the, the federal people are the ones that should be. Yeah, the, the federal people are the ones that should be dealing with this, and they have it in their charter that they can, even on the access road, that they don't own. Since it's accessing their access road. So it's, it's really the federal government that needs to be a part of that conversation. Because being class six, the town is tied.
Yeah.
In the meantime, I'll, I'll talk to the chief and, uh, I talked to Emmett, uh, last week. We were talking about, uh, Pond Hill Road and how he put gravel, uh, on Pond Hill, and that was considered a access emergency. So I didn't know, so, they, do, did they determine, or do, do you determine?
Uh, it's a combination.
Okay.
It's, usually it's, they determine there's a, a, an actual, like a, a full need, and then they bring it to us as, we should do this here, the, you know, five, six reasons why, and, and then it's our decision at that point.
Okay.
But I still think if we're, if they've asked us to patrol down here, they should be doing something, the government should be doing something, you know?
Again, the federal government should be doing something.
Should, yeah, should, should be, it'd be.
But, you know.
I haven't given up.
If, if I'm, if I'm allowed to push the federal government around, please let me know.
So before, uh, can we at least look into the having a sign up?
Yeah, um, can you check and see if we have those signs on other class six roads, and if we do, have we ordered one?
Well, if not, I mean, at least, let's just hypothetically, there's no signs. I mean, just for, uh, my, uh, situation, could it be allowed to put a sign up from the town? Cause of my situation?
Yeah, I, I don't know. Yeah, well, I mean, there's a sign for Pond Hill, that-
That's true, yes, there is, that's right.
It's like a buy it when we go stolen.
Sounds good.
If this one, if it's done in one place, it should, right?
That's right.
Yeah, if it's in one place, it should be in all of them, so, but that was my point, if we're, if we're doing it in other places, we, we should make sure it's done there.
Well, that I don't know, but do you want me to ask Emmett for a sign?
I, I would, I would suggest to, to Emmett that if we're doing this anyplace, we should make sure it's done in all, all of the class sixes, including, including guideboard.
Dude, what does the sign say?
Well, so the one for Pond Hill says, you know, well, they don't want certain wheeled vehicles or whatever, two hundred and fifty dollar fine, or, you know, but it's telling you that who can or cannot enter.
Skull on.
Oh, well, that's, hmm.
It may not be the same situation?
Yeah, cause a class, cause a class six town road doesn't-
Well, how about gates and, uh, gates and bars, I've seen those.
What was that?
Gates and bars.
And, and that's the one that's on Chadwick Hill.
Yeah.
Don't see it, cause it's buried in the woods over by Bory of Androids.
Yeah.
But there is a sign, road closed subject to gates and bars, whatever, so.
Right.
And you see those a lot places, yeah.
That does exist on that road, too, not prominently, but it's there.
That, that would make sense to me.
Yeah, let us do a little research on what is, would be proper and what we can actually do.
Yeah.
I don't think any of us are against it, but, and we wanna be fair to each.
Yeah, I, ask Emmett what, what makes the most sense, what we've done in other places and, and, okay, what we can do there.
I will, and then just wait, and if you do get a meeting, I could show up?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, you can show up.
No, I did, and I'll definitely-
That'd be great.
I would let you know.
I, I apologize, I didn't make it last time, I just completely, uh, and it was too bad, cause Emmett was right here.
Yeah.
That, when I talked to him, he told me that, uh, he was here, but I was not, ooh, jeez, that's, I mean, it's real quick. So, anyway.
You're so popular.
What's that?
You're so popular.
I meant to put her off when I was over, anyway, it is what it is.
It's okay, we've all done that.
Okay, thank you so much, I don't wanna wait, you know, let you, uh, get home and, you know, yada, yada.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, I should make it more often, this is, uh, pretty educational.
We try.
Good.
You know, I mean-
Always like smiling faces here.
Well, it, it was pretty good just to hear, you know, and I thought I had troubles and glad I don't live in yada, yada town, I mean, no, I'm not making fun of it, but-
I started showing up to, to select board meetings when I first came to town, cause, you know, I wanted to know what was going on, and sooner or later, they convince you to start doing stuff.
Yep, very educational, thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
I'll have my people get ahold of your people.
Yeah, do that.
All right, uh, so that moves us on to old business, record digitization.
All right, that's me, so I followed through with the information we were talking about last time about the concern in storage space. And I talked to Ray again and reached out to our IT company to ask what they thought for storage, and we compared it to what the town of Salem is using for storage for all their records, and they're only using ninety gigabytes for their storage, and we are a lot smaller than Salem, New Hampshire.
I think.
So I'm pretty sure we can get away with the twenty gigs, maybe forty at most, and be all right. So I didn't know if the board wanted to approve the quote or allow me to approve it for them, cause we just basically had to sign off on, or Dana, Dana could do it, too.
And so where, where are the, um, the original was for doing it through the website, which was not actually part of the quote, uh, is, do we have a newer quote that includes the license for the additional?
So I was just gonna go with the current licenses that we're doing, cause we're getting five.
Okay.
I don't know if we're gonna need all five licenses, cause I know I was explaining one for Dana, myself, Wendy, and the town clerk, but I don't know if we need one specifically for the tax collector.
And/or the treasurer.
Or the treasurer, well, the treasurer uses the same computer that Wendy does.
True. Okay. And-
Was the quote that he had given you that the board discussed a few weeks ago, was that including those licenses?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, and so it's the only thing that we came up with that, you didn't have the storage that you thought you had?
Right, cause originally, the, what it said in the bid proposal, it was stored in the cloud or on our system, so I assumed we would store it on our system.
And you've checked with him, and he's told, he's assured you that you have plenty of storage?
Right, and if we need to, if we do end up needing additional storage, we have the price, it's like a hundred and sixty dollars for ten gigabytes a year additional. So if we did, it's not like an exorbitant amount, it's still cheaper yearly subscription fee than the other service, buy a lot. And once again, with this service, you buy, like, maintenance, so if we wanna build a new type of document or system in, we buy hours worth of work as opposed to an annual subscription fee. So it's based on how much we need it.
So the dollar amount that the board has discussed before is the same?
Is the same.
And the, is this still what is recommended by the records retention committee?
So the records retention committee hasn't met since then, the original recommendation.
Okay.
I mean, we could talk to our chairman and ask if she'd like to have a meeting.
The ghost, you said chair, someone decided to follow or something.
My goodness, it's coming from within the building.
What's the rest of the board think?
I think Russ has been working really hard just to get an understanding that we know what we're getting.
Right.
Um, really is what this whole exercise was about.
You bang for your buck, correct.
And it's, this would still be by far cheaper than any of the other options, right?
Correct, well, the other option that was closest comes with a price tag like a thousand or two thousand dollars of an annual subscription fees.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars per year for a license.
Is there any reason, I mean, I feel like you've done all that, is there any reason we would say no? That, that everybody's, that I'm missing, I guess?
It, it, I mean, it looks like we're looking at the cheapest option, the, the only thing I can see is a possible gotcha fee is, as he was mentioning, we, we pay for support hours when creating new documents or process, so that I could see as a possible thing for like the first year or two. But I would certainly hope that that wouldn't be thousands of dollars, uh, which would, it would have to be thousands of dollars to make it-
It's one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars per ten hour block, and the first ten hour, hour block is included as part of that. And I remember we said at the last meeting that we would probably include that block of service in the budget until we had a certain amount stored. I think that makes sense.
And it makes sense that you're gonna have to use that anyway.
Right, cause the way he explained it is when you set up a new document, for example, if we wanted to add another process, say if somebody wanted to file building permits online, they would build that process out for us, and that's what that fee is used for.
Ten thousand dollars, which is ten hours.
Yeah.
But we, it's free the first, the first year.
Well, it's included in the first year.
The first ten hours of their time is included in the-
They say it's complimentary, but believe me, you're paying for it.
I understand, my mother always told me, nothing's for free.
Yeah, so, I mean, we al, we already approved that, so I don't see, I, I, I suggest run it, run it by the, the chair of the committee, but I don't see any reason not to-
Yeah, I don't think you need to approve it again. I think we just wanted you to understand, cause we had, we did not understand it as originally proposed to you.
There was a couple things that were misunderstanding that I wanted to go back with clarification on to make sure I knew the town was getting what it wanted. And I think the last part, like I said, is, you know, when Dana, sometimes you approve Dana to sign the contract or something like that, it would, you don't need somebody from the board to accept it, or-
We can ask, um, Michelle to call a meeting for the records retention.
And couldn't we make a motion if we wanted to, to say that we, as long as the committee is all in favor of it and doesn't have any other questions, that-
So we have, we have a fair chunk of the committee here, um, there are, of course, other people that sit on it, um, but the, I would suggest that we just make the motion to allow the chair of the records retention committee to sign the contract for the records retention.
That's fine by me, well, cause I mean, this is one of these things you can talk about until you're blue in the face, okay, it's time to move on, eh? Unless something else-
Unless they have a problem with it, she can sign it.
That's right, okay, I, I, I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So do you have that motion?
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
Did, did you have any further, further comment before you?
No, I just felt badly leading you.
Uh, don't feel bad.
It happens a lot.
Enjoy your kids, boom, bye.
Bye. Okay. So that moves us on to new business, and, uh, because I think the first and the third go together, I'm gonna jump to the second one first, intent to cut.
Okay, this is an intent to cut that was presented to us, I believe, by Marlo, and, uh, it needs to be approved. Russ has done what he has to do to make sure there's no outstanding taxes and that everything is clear, and I would recommend Marlo did not sign this. If you chose to, chose to.
That makes sense. Yeah, and this is standard intent to cut, this is not a, a taxation thing at this point, cause there's no, do, do these include estimates?
Yeah, there's an, there's an estimate on there, but, you know, yeah, and by rights-
Oh, I see, cordwood, sixteen cords and biomass, hundred and fifty, so on.
It's really to give notice to, to the neighbors, because it's really gonna be under the ten thousand cord fee, but I figured that we would make sure that people knew why we, what we, you know, why we're over there.
That makes sense.
So you need an emotion for that?
Oh, we just want you to sign it, just to sign it.
All right.
And really, and really, towns, there's, unless there's outstanding taxes, there's no reason for it to be denied.
As long as it's signed by the property owner, there's no outstanding taxes.
Yeah, you can't really deny it.
No. But I don't mind if you guys just wanna sign it.
Without saying anything else, uh, too specific, it is on Deer Meadow, so when you see them, you'll, you'll know that it's expected.
Two, twenty-two, twenty-two, boy, that's a good date.
Yes, it is. Uh, okay, so while I sign this, we can move on to the ADA checklist and front door replacement, cause I think they kinda go together.
Okay, which one would you rather hear first?
Not completely, but I do, we'll start with ADA.
All right, we've, uh, Tom, Russ had Tom Bay go through the building and, um, inspect it as far as what our ADA needs are here. Do you wanna go over?
Yeah, I mean, I, I talked to Tom about it all through the hall, so Tom and me went and walked through this, and I, as I showed the board previously, there's a checklist that's provided from the ADA people that goes over what each building should have, so I provided Tom Bay, our building inspector, with the list and said if we could go through town hall and kind of address each box that they listed in this pack and help us go over it, and so we went through downstairs, and there was a couple concerns, not major ones. One is the steepness of the ramp going up to the tax collector's office, it's a little steep, so they were suggesting putting a handrail on the sides so somebody with a wheelchair could have easier access getting to the top. And the other issue is the sinks in the bathrooms, cause as you look in the sink over there in the ladies room, I don't know if you can see it, it's a little bit lower and there's space underneath for somebody to put a wheelchair all the way up to it. So that's kind of like the two primary concerns that he addressed, and our compliance to be addressed in the future, so maybe that's something we can set aside in the CIP or work on in the future. There may have been a couple other details.
This might be a good year to, I mean, a lot of these are low-hanging fruit.
Right.
So, but this might be a good year to get those done.
I think there was a signage, but we were already addressing the signage.
Yeah, signage, I mean, again, we can do that without too much fussing.
So it doesn't sound, I read it, it doesn't sound like there's too many big, big deals at all, so.
Yep. Uh, originally, everybody was saying it was gonna be the front door, which is why I mentioned, they're kind of the same, but not really, because it didn't turn out to be a, an ADA issue.
Well, it has enough space to get someone in a wheelchair, and the ramp is not that bad. But however, it would be good to say get a button on there so nobody could open it from the outside, but our parking lot was fine, as Tom put it, there's ample, we're below the amount of parking spaces where you need a dedicated spot, and there is ample room for somebody to park a van, for somebody to put a wheelchair out onto the lot without causing an issue, so.
I'm not sure how you would open the door here in a wheelchair and get the doors in the car by it, but, but I'm not the ADA guy, you know?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But I think we could really work on some of those things and get, if we could find someone to work for us.
Right, that's, yeah.
You know, and getting the sinks replaced and, um, and it would be a step in the right direction.
I think that makes a lot of sense, um, and we, we don't have specific EDA budget, but we do have the, the ARPA funds, and we do have maintenance stuff, and some of these things are things that over time need maintenance anyway, I don't think any of our sinks are bad at this point, but, um-
No, and I think we might have enough wheelroom in the, if not the ARPA.
I was gonna ask you about the ARPA, yeah.
Into the, um, the capital, uh, town hall capital reserve account.
Oh, yes.
Which would really hit hard last year, but it's gonna be a little bit replenished, so we don't wanna get too much interest.
Have we had any of the ADA stuff looked at for the public portions of the lot or hall, et cetera, for the public safety building?
Not yet, haven't had time to work that out with Tom, if he gets a time where he can go and do it.
But that is on the, on the agenda.
That is the least I've been aware of it, we're just working out times to get to.
Would that be combined then, would that be like, if, if, when he, you're talking up to the fire station, right?
Right.
When he goes there and he might find a few things, it, it combines with, or does that come from?
Financially wise, they have their own.
Oh, okay, I just didn't know if, if we did and you could get a person, then maybe, yeah.
I mean, we could certainly, we could certainly do that.
You know, and then, and then maybe it's, it's grouped, so it might help to hire somebody to come in and do several items than just two items, you know?
Might help if find someone, yeah, yeah. Um, which, I mean, we have spoken with, we have a problem in the downstairs men's room, the urinal that's there, it's a waterless urinal, and it just is not, doesn't work very well.
And it's starting to get to the point where you could smell it in a whole way.
And so it's, you know, we'd like to-
I didn't say waterless, I'm not gonna ask.
Well, it's just, there's, I don't know how it works either, but-
I've never even heard of that before, but I don't use a pur-
They use, they use a replaceable filter instead of flushing. And, yeah.
I mean, I can, I, it's a good idea, I guess.
Water has a use, well, I know, but sometimes it's like, it's like your laundry machines, oh, it doesn't use much water and your clothes come out looking spotted still, cause they didn't show, same idea, yeah, yeah, to me.
So we've had a-
It's saving water and just getting the job done.
We had a hard time getting a quote to replace it, and we got a quote of eighteen hundred, which we haven't brought to you yet, because we're not at that point, but maybe we could do something if they- But maybe we could do something if they were doing the sink at the same time, or something like that. I'd love to see that problem go away, because it's, I'm tired of lugging hot water up the hallway.
I don't even use the urinal anymore. I just go and use the toilet.
Yeah.
This is stupid, but do you really need a urinal? I mean, how many people have houses? I've had brothers, I have five brothers and all that. We never had any. I mean, does it, is it a necessary thing to have a urinal?
Well, I think it's pretty necessary to, but, no, no, I'm just, I'm just, I mean, it's a public building, you know?
There isn't one up here, and this is where the public would generally be, so...
I don't see, I don't, if you're, if you're suggesting we could get rid of it, I think that would be fine, because...
Yeah, I mean, it's just something, you know, else that goes wrong.
I've never seen a line out that bad.
No, I mean, no, really, I mean...
Well, it's, it's, it's the kind of bathroom that, you know, usually you have, this is an odd conversation, but usually urinals would be only, you know, like a public restroom.
Right, right.
You don't have several people using the restroom.
I just assume...
Do you think it's because of the downstairs cafeteria type style where they might have events?
I honestly don't know. That's, I mean, that's a good question, but we shut the door in, I mean, usually people shut the door when they go in, so it's almost like just a one-at-a-time bathroom anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I'm with the, that's just another thing to go wrong.
That's right, exactly. I mean, I'm not a fan, so it's up to you guys.
It would be easy to just add another stall to, instead of that.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that's...
There's room for it.
Yeah, well, how much would be?
Not suggesting we should, but, you know.
I mean, I don't even think we need to do that. I think, I think one, one toilet's enough.
Yeah, it's probably fine.
And I think most people that come to eat at these suppers, they don't hang out, you know, they go eat and then they're gone. So, I think one, like you said, one, one more thing that goes wrong, forget it, just, you know, it's not necessary. It's not like we have hundreds of people here.
Yep.
Okay, well, there goes my economies of scale with the sink.
Well, Russ will have to do work to count the...
They gotta rip the sucker out, right?
They gotta rip it out and they gotta count the sucker.
Because I don't think we're gonna do it, are we? Will we let them do that?
That's a good idea.
Well, you know, I mean, we do have a school across the street, kids...
Hey, listen, I won't go over what I had to do as a kid.
Well, I, I was more referring to the more mischievous kids that...
Oh, would like to rip it out.
That used to blow things like that off of the walls in high school.
High school.
Of course, that only works when you can flush it.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, there's no water.
So, did we figure that out, or we just gonna forget it? Get rid of it?
I, I think that the consensus is we just get rid of it.
Yeah.
Right? And then we'll deal with the sink on a separate issue.
Yeah.
How about that?
Sounds good.
The next is the...
It could even be a second, well, no, because there isn't water going to it. I was gonna say, you could just use that to add a new sink instead of having to do anything for the head of access. No, there's no water. Though the space could be used that way, or for the larger...
You can put a changing table in there.
True.
Like, we have really...
Well, there's no bring your kids to work, okay?
I'm very happy to say I'm beyond that.
It would be interesting to know who decided that they needed a urinal and then a waterless one. I mean, I get the waterless part, but you know what I mean. They're not waterless toilets.
Well, I think that...
Those exist.
You know, it may have been, you know, hey, it's great to conserve water.
Well, right, right, right.
It could also just been before all of the filtration in this building that it was just clogging the smaller ports on, on here, and also they couldn't keep flushing it. Because before filtration, it's not very good.
Can we go to the next one?
We got our, you know, we got our monies within that one.
Yeah, all right, so that, that was the ADA stuff.
So, then we got a quote from Granite State Glass for the front door.
Probably, were you requesting a second quote?
Um, well, yeah, that's where it's going.
So, probably wouldn't have...
I really wanted to, to, yeah, you're saying to be quiet with your mouth. I wanted to have, I wanted to have more than one quote, and I've had more than one vendor tell me that they're even too busy to come do a quote.
Wow.
But maybe they could come in the spring.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't like, oh, my God, we're gonna do this right now.
Right.
It's not, it's not, but I think it gives us an idea where we are.
Yeah.
And again, I would love for this to happen this year, if we could.
And that's so you can be able to walk it.
I, I think it's a safety thing that would be much improved, as well as the ADA part of it. I mean, I, I know Tom didn't bring up the door, but I still think this is a much better arrangement than what we have.
The, the comment that I'll make without giving figures is that the, not necessarily the second asterisk on paint, but the first asterisk, power supply by others to, to do all of that, and that needs to have code approvals and so on and so forth associated with it, so that's not an insignificant cost to be added on.
And you recall that we also have the company that does the actual FOBS, this Electronic Security of Manchester. They were, what, thirty-five hundred to do that, in addition to what you're looking at here.
Yep.
The only thing I wonder about is because of pricing now, everything is so much, so crazy. If we could wait a year or so, maybe think of how to get normal, so...
This, this is the normal.
Think this is not changing anytime soon? Don't be that way. I don't wanna hear you.
The, the cost of goods is not gonna go back down.
No. Wishful thinking.
I think you're too abre- abre-...
Well, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go on.
I, I, I mean, I don't know. That's, that's a good question. I know, from, from my standpoint, I watch lumber go all over the map, all the time.
It's up, it's down.
It's ups, downs.
Really?
Just like the raw product, up, down, here, there.
But that's how much they pay you for supply. That's not how much they charge people to get it.
Right, right, but I, I've also, because they have what you call NELMA, which gives you the list of what lumber prices are, and they definitely fluctuate all the time. So, steel, up and down, okay, which I'm assuming some of, I don't know if these are wood or steel doors, but fiberglass. But you know what I mean, that, that does, that does fluctuate, so I would somewhat disagree because of what I've seen over the years. But that doesn't mean it might not be ten. I don't, I don't, you know, and then ten might be a little crazy, because you're still gonna have, like you said, inflation and all that stuff, but...
Why don't I continue seeing if I can get another quote?
Yeah, that would be great.
I'd love to see the, I mean, I know that we only have to request quotes from at least three people for things over ten grand, but I'd, I'd love to actually see three quotes. I know that's a hard ask at this point, but...
Well, it usually isn't a hard ask, and it's...
You wouldn't think so.
You know, but...
Especially when we're telling them what we want, not asking them necessarily to come here.
It's so, yeah, I'm just...
What is, what is the panic electric strike option? Is that what, is there gonna be a button or is that, because that's not...
No, I think the, what they're referring to is the panic bar, which is the bar that opens the door from the inside.
Yeah.
They call it a panic bar.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what usually, in schools, it's a panic bar.
Because usually when we leave, we're not panicking, we're so glad.
Yeah, we're just like, get out of here.
You're just hoping the door doesn't lock yet.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this?
No.
All right. That brings us to job description update.
So, I did a job description for the fire chief, which I have plagiarized from several other job descriptions. I have given a copy to Emmett, and I asked Emmett to chat about it at your next meeting, at the department head meeting, and I wanted you to just have it so that you could have it. He had some good points about some of the educational requirements, and I think he's talking about under the minimum qualifications required. He thought it would be a good idea to give the select board a little bit of wiggle room in the event you had someone like an Emmett who had thirty years' experience in the fire service, but may not be a certified firefighter too, or something like that. And you might have something like so much time to get those certifications. That was his suggestion.
Yep.
He, he didn't really have any other comments other than that. So, I guess he will be here next time, and I think it's good for the board to hear what he thinks of it.
Sounds good.
I just wanted you to, I'm trying to get things done, as hard as it looks.
You mean not talk about it eighty times?
What's that?
You mean not talk about it eighty times?
Well, that's a good idea. I'm trying.
How about, how about seventy?
I'm trying to change my ways.
Okay.
Come on, we're government.
To go forward and not send no more.
All right. Any other questions, comments on that?
Nope.
All right, that moves us on to the last of new business that's listed, which is abatements.
All right, so we've got a campground abatement here. So, JMJ Resort Properties received two campground tax bills in error, and generally when JMJ Resorts Properties is the one that owns Cozy Ponds, gets taxed, they get taxed on the whole lot, not the individual campground lots, so they shouldn't have got these bills.
So, that's easy.
Yeah.
All right.
Why are we gonna sign it if they're not supposed to get the bill?
So, is it that they got it instead of the people who were supposed to, or...
So, those people are no longer there.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
So, it went back to ownership for JMJ. For whatever reason, it sent the tax bills out.
Okay, so we almost got billed twice, I guess.
Right.
Because he got it regularly, yeah.
All right, that the only abatement.
That's it?
That moves us on to correspondence.
Yes, correspondence. There is one, we did get a letter from Central New Hampshire Regional Planning. They are planning their traffic count program, which is a yearly thing. They've given us where they've counted traffic in the past. Last year, we didn't have them do any. I did reach out to the police chief and the, and the road agent last year, and they didn't give me any, but I will do so again. And if they have suggestions, or if the board has a suggestion where they'd like to see one, I need to let the regional planning know by April first.
So, by April first, April. So, that means they would probably do their, they would probably place them either way, April or May.
I would say in the spring, yeah, May or late April or May. What's that? Oh, what, guidebook? Yeah, there you go.
What was that?
I actually like that idea.
Yeah.
What was that?
We could do a traffic count and guide and hill road.
Oh, yeah.
See, I could actually go down over here.
Well, we, we were expecting to get that from the, the speed sign, once that was put up there. The chief said that he, he could get those numbers out of that, too.
Are they count people?
Yeah, we'd count them and give average speeds, since both speed and number of people were listed as issues. That's a good thought, though.
We can give them up to five locations, well, five set primary, five secondary. I think Close Pen Bridge Road, I know they've done it before, but I think that's a good place to do it myself.
Especially when we wanna replace the bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Close Pen Bridge Road going over the Blackwater River, it's been done twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. I don't, well, I think it would be appropriate to do it. I don't think it's appropriate to do it at the same time as we're trying to replace the bridge.
That's a good one.
Okay, I, I, I thought it wasn't all that recent. I guess there's so many Blackwater rivers in Austin.
What's the other bridge we were trying to replace?
White Plains Road.
White Plains. Well, the one after that.
The one in Bosco and Cornhill Road.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so it's actually been a while since that one's been done, Cornhill at Bosco and Town Line. Last time that was done was twenty sixteen, so I would definitely like to see that one done.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Which one is that again, Cornhill?
Cornhill at Bosco and Town Line.
Close Pen Bridge Road east of one twenty-seven was a...
Yeah, that, that would be basically the, the turn-in right here, which again is, is not really gonna pick up numbers that will matter, especially when the bridge gets under construction. So, I think that would be more, more appropriate next year.
I think it's interesting, do we maintain Long Street?
Longer lane?
No, Long, Long Street. I'll have to ask Emmett that. Yes, I do.
I don't think it's on the list of class six.
I know it's not a class six, but I, I didn't know.
That showed, yeah, that showed a lot of...
That's right.
That's heavily traveled.
I was gonna say, that is a real, that's one of the business...
I'll ask Emmett about that one, if that's our road. I think that's a good one.
We must maintain it partly, partway.
I would say, but...
I would, I can't believe Bosco is gonna do it on their goods...
Well, I wonder if it was one of those roads, I mean, like, the state does a few roads, for example, they do, they do part of White Plains Road.
Yeah.
That might be the case. I could look at the map.
I, but, well...
But I think it would be a good place to, we haven't done it since twenty thirteen.
Well, there also might be some roads on there that aren't listed, or sections of road that aren't listed that haven't been done in really long.
Could be. So, we need to work with Emmett on this.
Yeah, there's a couple, like, one twenty-seven ones that, obviously, we've done the Warner one recently, because we were looking at what should be expected for things like White Plains in the future. But one twenty-seven at Salisbury Town Line hasn't been done since twenty thirteen.
And you know, now, that, that isn't my question about Long Street, because that is a state road, so he's just giving us all roads in town.
And the Long Street at the Bosco and Town Line also hasn't been done since twenty thirteen. And maybe that's why, because maybe we don't really care about the numbers if we're not using them to figure out what we need to do for road maintenance.
Yeah, but we should kind of, in a way, we should know, I would think, whether we're maintaining them or not, we should know where the traffic's coming from.
Yes.
That's just knowledge, I guess.
And would they do the Deer Meadow to Concord?
Yeah, that's...
Deer Meadow at Concord Town Line was...
They did that last in twenty nineteen.
Okay, so that was recent. I'm just thinking there might be some other places that aren't even on that list that haven't been done yet.
Yeah, so...
One that hasn't been done in forever is, since twenty thirteen, is also Bashan Hollow. And I think more people actually travel that now on the way to the town.
Yeah, that's true. You're right. A lot of people go by there. Yeah, I agree.
Though maybe not during mud season when they're likely to put this out.
I don't, yeah, but that's just for trucks, so cars will...
Well, it's not that people aren't allowed, but a lot of people will say, you know, I don't, I don't wanna deal with that and just go down the road further.
I don't know about that. Well, why don't, I mean, really?
Why don't I talk with Emmett?
Yeah, I was gonna say, get a little bit...
At next meeting, we'll tell you what he thinks is important.
Because it's kind of a guess anyways.
Yeah.
I definitely wanna see the one that's Cornhill at Bosco and, because that is the bridge that we're, we need to work on with Bosco and, and having numbers for that is important. But the rest, yeah, whatever Emmett or the chief think would be appropriate or important.
So, and the other thing on, in correspondence is just, Russ is giving you notice of a couple of CDA cases.
Yeah.
So, there's no action on it.
I think he made a president of those.
What was that?
I said he think he might have done at those meetings.
Yeah, might have.
All right.
Yes, I definitely was.
So, did we have one other correspondence, right?
No, I thought that was all I had.
I thought we had the treasurer one.
Oh, I forgot to bring that up. I sent that to you today, the report from the treasurer.
Because you wanted to, to talk about a couple of the points, I thought.
Yeah, I think that the treasurer has some good points, and I've been, I've been, I guess the biggest thing, and I'm gonna try to explain it the best I can, is that... is that we have, the money for the deposit in the bank comes from many different directions. So what Wendy gets at the end of the day from the tax collector is a total, and what she gets from Michelle, the town clerk, is a total. But that total could be made up of so much in cash, so much in checks, so much in credit cards, and Michelle is finding it disturbing that all that comes on the banks, I mean, that comes separated on the bank statement, but we've got just a total poster. And so it's sometimes hard to read that back and forth, but I think there are things we can do to solve that. And I was talking with Michelle this afternoon, and she was in about it as well. I think a spreadsheet with, here's the deposit of a thousand dollars today, this, so much of this was cash, so much of that, and if we have it on the right date, she can match it easily, that's, that's been her, and, and I agree, it's very overwhelming to try and do when you have a ton of transactions, and, and we're not New York City, but yet, you know, it's still a lot of transactions, and, and it's difficult to balance, so I don't mind working with her trying to, that was her main, that was her main thing. Other points that she had, and she had asked me, she said, oh, I didn't know you were gonna send it to the select board, and I said, well, I'd like them to know. And she says, well, you know, I wasn't complaining about anybody, and I said, well, they know that. The, the other thing that she was concerned about is she's very concerned about if everything's approved. And really, the treasurer's job, if the board approves it, it's approved. It's not, you know, it's not her job to worry about if we needed it, or didn't need it, or, or whatever. And, but I think she's doing a really good job, and she's trying to really cross the Ts and dot the Is. So anyway, she and I work well together, and I'm bringing Wendy into the mix, and it's coming around. But she was, one thing that I did like about that report, and she wasn't, I don't think she was sending it to be complaining, I think that she'd like to give a monthly report, and I think that's a great idea, so that you kinda, you know.
Yeah.
She's also working with Melissa John, Melissa is the deputy treasurer, and so she's kind of wanting to train her so that if anything happened to Michelle, Melissa could just step right in and, and, and take over. So it's, before, it's kind of been, the deputy, all they've done is kind of signed the checks, you know, but, and they didn't really have the background. So I think that's a good idea, too.
Absolutely, yeah, no, you're right.
So.
Cause you never know what can happen, so.
And, you know, it's not, we don't have a lot of choices, not everyone wants to be treasurer, because it is a lot of work, it does have a stipend, but still, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of responsibility, and it's, I mean, it's more than the general fund, we have all these impact fees that are all separate accounts and all these other accounts. She has given you kind of what she'd like to see happen to Old Home Day, and the way we've done Old Home Day has just not really been right. That should be going through the town office.
Now, we have other things, whether it was, for example, Wester Software when that existed, or what had been proposed for the Historic Society was a donation. And Old Home Day accepts donations, so is, are they actually a nonprofit that can accept donations? Or are, is that kind of being managed in a weird way?
Old Home Day is us.
Well, I, I know that.
They're not separate.
Okay, so they're not separate at all.
They're us.
Cause people have donated a lot towards Old Home Day.
And, yeah, and that's, I think that's the, before it's been, I think that the, the idea was hands-off, we'll let the Old Home Day committee handle the Old Home Day money, which I'm sure they've done a great job, I'm not saying anything different. And then the town has said, okay, we vote every year, the town meeting to give them X amount of money. And so we give it to them as they spend it, we don't give them a check, they don't have, they have a separate checking account, but it's a town account.
Okay.
So that's a good point about people who donate money, cause we really should be depositing those funds as a revenue for Old Home Day as well. So in other words, we should be controlling all the money, or the treasurer should be controlling that money.
Do you really think a lot of people donate to Old Home Day?
Well, at least a lot of the services and stuff, they've said, have been donated in the past.
What do you mean, services?
Some of it has been.
You mean like non-monetary stuff?
Yeah.
Firework money.
Yeah, we did get towards fireworks or towards.
I ran this, I ran this Old Home Day for a long time, so.
The, the dunk tank apparatus and stuff like that have been donated by various people, or, or at least that's what I've been told in the past.
No, that's true, because I was the first one, chairman with my Old Home Day committee, we were the first ones to get fireworks. And we did get a donation then, so, yeah, big, that's where we got it.
So it, it strikes me as odd that, that, because I didn't think the town could actually accept donations like that. Cause I know that's, for example, with fire stuff, that's why they always have an association, that's a nonprofit organization. So do, maybe we need to look at either not doing that with donations, or having them actually be a nonprofit that then we make a, a town donation to.
Let me ask Legal about it, because.
Cause it seems weird.
I, I think it's, I think it would just make one more entity that we really don't need to have. And it also puts, someone has to be responsible for that.
Right.
And, and finding the person, you know.
I know, when, when I ran it, we, we had, we just, people, you know, we get, we needed some, we needed so much food, we'd get, they'd buy it. Luckily, we had somebody that worked at Market Pass bring the food, and then I'd get a check to pay her back. So that's how we worked everything, everything came from the town, I, we, my, as a president.
Was it, that does reimbursements?
Pardon, yeah, basically, that's what it was, it was, yeah.
That's basically what we still do.
Yeah.
Cause reimbursements are simple, but that doesn't account for, for donations.
And I think what Michelle is saying, that when Bruce is treasurer, he did the Old Home Day account on his own, people would call Bruce direct and, and say Bruce, or they'd send him their receipt or whatever it was, and he would send them a check. She doesn't wanna write the check, she wants Wendy to write the checks, and she would sign them.
Oh, that makes sense.
And I think, and, and I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I do, too, because that's, that's how we did it, we just had, you know, we, we had, we knew what we needed, and they would give us a check and all of that.
I didn't know if ever, and Dee, you might know this, but maybe it's not, but I didn't know if at one time, there was an Old Home Day committee and they had, they ran their own money, which.
No, we never ran our own money, no. No, we, we got money from the town, no, we got money from the town, and, and that, the only thing we did, the first year we had fireworks, we got donated for the, we had somebody donate for the fireworks, but then I think it was included in the, in the whole regular Old Home Day budget.
I mean, there's obviously ways to handle that, we're not the only town that has that, yeah.
And then we never. You don't want, you don't want people not to donate to make it, yeah, so we wanna make it at least less complicated and as easy to be transported as possible.
And the one thing is, we, because we never charge anything for anything at Old Home Day. I haven't been for a few years, but I'm sure they still don't do that, that was one of the big things, nobody ever charged, we didn't have people selling food. Matter of fact, that's one reason.
No, how come?
Because people don't wanna, originally, it was like picnics and stuff, but, you know, everybody's working now, so that didn't happen. But when I started the Old Home Day, when I was the president, we decided we, we wanted to sell things. Well, jeez, if my, you know, I could have had my head handed to me by some people in this town, we can't sell anything. So the next school, next meeting I had for Old Home Day, I said, let's give it away free. So we ended up, we gave free punch, we had hand workers and hot dogs that we were giving away, we gave all of it away. Because what happened is, people would go to the parade, after the parade, they're all hungry, no, we had time to make picnic lunches, except one family, and they made, she made for everybody, you know, for her family.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so we left, and they never came back.
Well, that's what, that's what I witnessed, I witnessed that, that it, you know, and, and maybe even call it a donation, you know what I mean? But, you know, even when, when the ice cream truck would be there.
Yep.
That was really unique. You gotta have a few unique things to keep people's interest in.
Right, and then once they stay. We used to have crazy things like softball games between the guys and, you know, fire departments at Webster, Bosco, and Salisbury, whatever. And we had firemen's musters, which was so much fun from a different town, that was so much fun.
Yeah.
And, but it's work, you know, that's the trouble, it's work. But once, you know, we were giving away food, we had watermelon punch, and then, and then we ended up giving hot dogs and hamburgers away, and that kept people there. So then we could have the whole afternoon, and, you know, then they had to dance at night and stuff like that, so we were busy the whole day.
Well, the more you can keep it centralized and things happening, but I suppose that's for another conversation, but, but, but with that being said, if we're gonna, if you're gonna do it, let's do it so it draws people in, not, you know.
And when people go home.
And food keeps people.
Right, exactly.
And, and, you know, smelling chicken cooking or a hamburger cooking, that is.
I was just gonna say, hasn't the, hasn't the church often done the chicken barbecue?
You know what I mean, if you're gonna, I, I, whatever.
I thought they did it here across the street.
Well, I know, but you, you see what I'm saying, though, when, when you're having the picnic over there, you have that, that smell and that aroma, and that draws, that draws people, and as you, as you see at other different towns, like the Warner Day Festival, you know.
Oh, yeah, they have big.
You know, they have the lobsters cooking, the chicken cooking, it, it keeps people.
Right.
And, and engaged and not, yeah, but that's probably for the committee, not for me.
Well, I think, I think that's what Michelle is, is saying, you know, so when, when you're over there eating your lobster and chicken for free, Wendy can be here writing checks.
Again, nothing for nothing, Dana.
So that, and.
All right, well, it's time for public comment, of which we have none. So that brings us to motions and approvals. I had a few typographical changes that I sent over to Russ earlier, a couple spelling things, et cetera. There's one that could be conceived as a actual change, so I wanted to bring that up to the board, and that.
We're talking selectman's meeting minutes?
Yes, the meeting minutes. And I'm trying to look at my notes to exactly which spot that was.
It involves the test pits.
Yes.
The what?
Oh, yes, here we go, page two, so February seventh, meeting minutes, page two, line two. We were talking about the test pits for Emmett to, for grappling in sand, and it says that we agreed he could, and I believe that should say we agreed he should, instead of could. And that is my.
Russ, could you get that straight?
Well, that's.
Sorry.
Just, you know, because one is a direction to him, and the other is allowance, and.
Good pick-up.
Especially for a future board, maybe my memory is incorrect of that, cause I didn't go watch the, the, the film on it, but that was my recollection, and so I wanted to ask the board if they thought that was appropriate.
Yeah, cause we were saying he could.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do it.
Well, could versus please do it, you know.
Yeah.
Should means you want it.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So I think we said, said he should, because we want him to.
In the spring, is that what you meant?
Yeah.
He, he should, yeah, that's right, Salisbury, right.
All right. Should instead of could.
Yeah.
All right, should.
Should or would or could, I don't know.
And the rest were some typos that don't actually change anything that I sent to him, I, I can list them if you want to.
No, don't worry about it.
Any other comments, changes, questions?
No.
I am sad I took out exclaimed.
What was that?
Public hearing, exclaimed instead of told to the board. I know the section of time a little.
Yeah, you, that was hard on you to take all that out, wasn't it? Yeah.
All right, so do we need a motion to accept February seventh's meeting minutes?
It would be, well, I think we can accept all of them as, as amended.
As written, as amended, yeah.
All right, I make that motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And so that moves us to trustees and signing, if there's more for us to sign.
Okay, this is, I have one bill for the trustees of trust funds, it's a rental invoice of a Chapel Tractor. It is for a front-end loader that Emmett used down on Concord Drive, and there was a little mix-up with the rental agreement, and he didn't know we had this bill until just recently, so that is the motion.
Aye, sir.
All right. Tractor, highways and roads. And so what was the, what was the short version of the mix-up for not, like, were we renting a bunch of stuff, or?
No, he started off renting it by the day, and it turned out that he changed the agreement to rent it for a longer period of time because he needed it longer.
And that's not for that to happen.
That makes sense.
Been there.
So, in that case, go for checking over it. I requested, I, I moved to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of one thousand thirty dollars to pay invoice R zero zero four seven one to Chapel Tractor for rental of front-end loader for Concord Drive. These funds to come from the Highway and Roads Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
I was letting her check the numbers.
Well.
I did speak with her about those late charges.
Thank you, cause as you know.
I know, and they felt that they deserved them because the bill was older, and I didn't wanna get into an argument, I mean, over thirty dollars.
I know.
You know, but I agree with you, Marlo, I, I'm with you.
Yeah, that, that's kind of why I asked it, what I did, so.
I didn't wanna not pay it, and then next month I get a statement that charges a late charge on the.
Not allowed to. Can't charge a late fee on a late fee.
Oh, is that right?
Really, I didn't know that.
Not allowed to do that.
All right, so.
But I get where you're going. Yeah, yeah.
So I guess Dee seconds then, and I'll give that to Dee, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last is signing?
Yes.
Unless we have some non-publicary afterwards that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, I could have a non, I'm gonna ask you for a non-publicary.
Okay.
We have the payroll, and the accounts payable.
Okay.
Payroll is the second payroll of the month, which is the smaller payroll, fifteen thousand six sixty-one fifteen. We have, this is the forty-nine dollars that you've already approved from ARPA, but there's the manifest that I need you to sign. And the check run is twenty-nine thousand nine oh seven, there's really nothing on it that's very interesting.
Did you, did you, do you have the backup to this, up here, all this stuff?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Could I just look at that?
Oh, up here? No, I don't, but I could.
No, 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 don't worry about it, I, I, I mean, I'm sure there's, I was just curious on a couple of them.
Which ones are you interested in? I don't mind going down, Marlo, getting it, I can, it just takes me.
Are you sure?
I'm not used to meeting in person, I guess. If you hear a crash, you know I fell over a chair.
Don't do any more tricks down here.
No more backflips in the kitchen.
Yeah, I just, I mean, not that it matters, I just.
Oh, this one?
I don't, I don't, I just was curious what it is, that's all.
I mean, I can't read it there for me.
Oh, sorry.
Line, oh, oh, right here, I'm looking right at it, right here.
Yeah.
Not questioning, I just like to know what it is.
That's not our attorney, is that, that's not our attorney?
No, that, that's an LLC, and if I were to guess, that would be a welfare thing. Don't know who Chuck or Tony Dell, that's our attorney. Oh, that is, that is our attorney.
That is our attorney?
Oh.
That's how much I pay our attention.
Well. I'm not sure we always talk about the name of them.
No, that's.
We just say, check with our attorney.
Yeah, no, right, exactly.
And that's not our attorney's name, that's the firm's.
That's right, I know, and god, it's like accountant's names and attorney's names, it's, they never make it easy, if you ask me.
So, so we're client 11201?
Maybe.
I read that part of the bill, I just opened the bill and the number I handed to Dana.
Oh, that's what it says.
Just like to see what.
They're asking about, um, Donahue.
That was your, your, the attorney, huh?
Oh, yeah, a lot of that, though, is your property sales.
Ah.
And, but the bill's in there.
Okay.
So, so that must mean that our, uh, our deeded properties are just about ready to go out to bid?
Mm-hmm.
Ah-huh.
And a lot of other unusual problems, like we can't find, um, the person that used to own 18 Mount Vernon Drive Terrace. Um, and we have to file an interpleter, I think they call it.
Yeah, something like that.
I don't like that setup.
Can't find him, uh, just disappeared off the map.
You know, I don't know.
Well, the good news is that stuff is covered by the same person.
Well, and so that, you know, a lot of that is, I'm glad to say, is not really me calling the attorney every 10 minutes. Although I have called him every 10 minutes with his property sales book.
Yeah. I noticed that the, the last one was unitil. How did the, how did this set of statements look comparative to the past? Do, are we going to have a challenge and need to suggest that a amendment to the budget be made at town meeting? Or do we still look covered?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
I mean, they, they were, the last two months have been very rugged bills on unitil.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anything else for us to sign or deal with that way before?
Um, before you go into, before I ask you, before I do anything else, um, you, I had, I gave you a list of.
Oh, yes.
Accounting, the policies that you had met on October 12th, and I finally got them in a form to, to give to you with the changes. And there were two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you had eight policies. Changes to the town's accounting policy, there was a slight change in that the wording, um, was changed to, I think, town administrator rather than the select board. And, let's see, change in town adminis, oh, okay, the financial administrator, the old one, it said the financial administrator started the budget where it's really the town administrator, so that's been changed. Agenda topic, um, there were, there was, uh, no change, but all of these need to be retyped and, or reword. The alarm ordinance through the fire and police department, and I talked to both Emmett and Steve about that. And that may need some more work, but we've combined them rather than have two separate alarm ordinances, one for each. We've combined them with the fees for each on one policy. Uh, the credit card policy is still a work in progress, because I saw another one that I think I like a little better than this one, so I'm gonna bring that to you. Uh, email policy, fraud policy you agreed with, harassment you agreed with, and the fund balance, so those are ready now. What you're seeing here is, I'm putting them in a book, alphanumeric, um, to make it official, what I call an official codebook. So it'd be easy to reference all these regulations and policies. Ordinances will be at the front of the book, policies will be the second part of the book. Which means we have many more of these to do. Um, and maybe now that we've gotten the budget to bed, or almost to bed, um, we should start doing that. And did you wanna do it in a work session, or do you wanna do it in a select board meeting?
I think a, a work session is probably the most appropriate for going over them and then announcing them all and what, you know, that, hey, all of these have changed and they're all available here now. Um, makes sense out of it.
Yeah, Michelle had a list, which I had given to you, but she has a list of all the policies over the years, and there, there's a few holes in there. And that's what I'm working on, filling those holes and organizing. How many policies do you think would make sense to do in each session? And, and I guess I should really copy them, give them to you so you can read them, um, when you're busy, when you're busy doing nothing.
Right.
I, I guess it depends on the length of the individual policies. Not that we're doing the personnel policy, but like, that wouldn't even be a single meeting.
Right.
I don't think there's any that are that involved, uh, other than that one.
Yeah, some of them are very, you know, but, short.
Maybe we should aim for about three pages or so each time, and if that's three policies, great. If it's one policy, fine. For, like, if we're looking at more, maybe if we did it, you know, at each meeting, as opposed to one giant list all at once. As much as I like to go hash everything out all at once at a, at a, you know, work session, that also means we all of a sudden dump a whole lot of everything all at once on Dana.
And that way, if you have smaller, I could probably keep up with it better.
Yeah.
And I, and I realize I've been the holdup on, on this, I just haven't had time to do it.
We forgive you.
But that's very nice of you.
Speak for yourself.
This is a project that I think is important. It's also a project I'd like, um, to organize these types of.
I am glad you do, 'cause policy's not my thing.
Well, I, 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 you know, I don't have to write them, I just, you know, but.
Well, it makes it easier if anybody's got any questions or concerns, it's in that book, yeah.
You know, what I'm looking, I see on the website, we have many of our policies there, so they're not all there.
No.
And, um.
Which I thought they actually were all on the website.
Much to our surprise.
However, with the book, we would have the codebook on there, and we would have, that would have an index. And so that you, people could look and say, you know, maybe it's what they're thinking they're looking for is not what they're looking for.
Right.
Or something like.
Well, that's, that's fantastic.
So, I, and then Michelle could have this, and I'd love to, I'd love to have it done tomorrow, but that's not gonna happen. But if you did three, what you're saying is at each meeting, maybe do three policies or three pages.
Three pages, well, that's.
Whether it's one or three.
Right.
And that way I could keep up with it.
Do that would have been, you know, 10 to 15 minutes at each meeting.
Oh, so you're not talking work session, you're talking about in the regular meeting?
Yeah.
'Cause I don't care.
Then there's nothing extra special, and it's, you know, we get a couple done each time. Like, okay, this is what we think, and then for the next meeting, we can approve the changes, 'cause people have the time to bring it back to us.
It just might take us forever.
I, it does string things out further for us, but it makes sure that it's easy to keep on top of it, too.
Yeah, I guess I don't.
I'm fine either way.
I, I could go either way, too. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, a work session here and there to do, you know, four or five of them at, at a whack. But I, how many is there altogether that we're gonna wanna review?
Probably about 30, 35, I don't know.
Uh, so, there's of course what's on the website, and then, oh, I did it the wrong way. One moment. And then, um, it's on a large display now.
One, two.
But this is, I don't know if that's the Bible or.
I haven't seen the list before, but.
Here we go. So here is the list of policies and regulations that are on file with our town clerk that, in theory, we should be going through most of. Some of these are zoning board, uh, or.
Yeah, so you can disregard the zoning board.
Yeah, those, we don't have to worry about that.
And a lot of them are, are us, like, all of these different policies and stuff are about.
Do we ever decide if the policy is necessary?
And what was that?
Do we ever decide if a policy is necessary?
You might have some that you're gonna resent, that you might decide to resent.
So when, when were the last times these were all checked over? Were they ever, I mean, once they're put in there, nobody checked them over for 20 years?
Well, I don't know, I, I can tell you, I never have done it.
And how many years have you been here?
Almost, well, year and a half.
Oh, wow.
I don't know. You know, they've been amended several times, some of them have several amendments. Um, and, but I don't really think they've been reviewed like what we're doing now.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. 'Cause I don't mind meeting in the afternoon, can you ever do a meeting in the afternoon? Not Mondays, but whatever day you can do it, maybe, I don't know, Marlo's doing.
But some, some of them I can do, uh, at usually around 1:30 or 2:00 for a couple hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be all right.
I mean, I'd like to have them first.
Yeah.
Read through them, and then we might be able to.
That's a good way to do it.
Might be able to.
Yeah, right.
Look it over and then, and then have our.
Change, make changes or whatever.
And I could give you, I could give you, like, maybe 10, and you might not get through them, but.
I was thinking five at a time.
I would give you five.
What do you think? Seven, seven and a half?
Going once, going twice.
I, I, well, you know what it's, you know what it is, too, how long are they?
Yeah, some of them are gonna be, you know, a paragraph, and these are gonna be several pages.
No, 10's fine, 10's fine, probably, yeah.
For example, the live stream policy, you're gonna go through that really fast.
Yeah.
'Cause it's yours, but.
Oh.
He will.
Thank you for bringing up lives, the live stream policy. I know we suggested that we wanted to exempt the checklist meetings from that. As part of publicly noticed meetings, there, and something that would normally be on video for a lot of places is voting. And I think it's good to have the conversation ahead of time about that. Obviously, it needs to be in a way that can never be looking at what someone's doing. But the, that's an easy enough thing, whether it's on a, just the ballot box or whatever. The, my comment for it is, I think specifically we should, uh, say that we do not want audio on that. Not because conversation is, is bad, but because for the same reason of the checklist. While, yes, people's names and registrations on the checklist are public information, um, that is a publicly available document. Uh, I don't think it behooves anybody to have that information posted to, and publicly made available on YouTube.
No, I don't either. Just think, some things have to be, I mean, it's public, but somebody has to go out of their way to get it.
Yeah, they have to come request.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's too much, too, it's too easy now, everything.
And, yeah.
Yeah, scary, scary. I mean, now they're talking about those, what are those little square things, and now they're saying hackers are getting into that stuff. What are, you can take a picture of.
Oh, the QR code?
Yeah, and now hacker, you know, it's like, it's so ridiculous. I get so aggravated with this kinda stuff. So, now what do you, so you're talking about pictures of the ballot box as people put their ballots in?
No, 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 so, so normally you would have video of, like, the process, and like, normally we have the, the benches and stuff up here during voting.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And that's, you know, like, yes, you got checked off, yes, okay, you, you handed the moderator your, your ballot.
Yeah, right.
Into the box and so on. And in, in most places, it, well, I shouldn't say most, but in a lot of places, that's what's filmed, and.
And not, not somebody might, not, not somebody's voice saying.
I hate that.
Leak, leak, leak.
Right.
Right, because, because we all know that that could happen in that situation.
Blah, blah, blah.
That's right, yeah. So, no, so you, you do the videoing just so that you, they can see that the process is being handled so professionally, but we're not gonna video people's voices.
Audio, right, yeah, right.
Sorry.
And, and that gives them visuals of the box itself, and then it can be turned to the count where the box is empty, it's.
Totally, totally agree, I wouldn't even discuss ever having audio, that to me is.
No, I think you're right.
That's just asking.
And, you know, just because we haven't mentioned it and they haven't put that in the policy, I think it's, uh, I think it behooves us to have that conversation.
Yeah.
And say, yeah, let's not do that, so.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll give you the live stream policy and make.
Okay.
Town meeting, on the other hand.
Yeah.
That means to all be there.
Yeah.
So, all right, any other questions?
God, it would be hilarious, though.
So do you wanna set a, a work session for this?
Or do you wanna see them at?
Or do you wanna see them at a meeting?
I just, as soon as I have a work session, a couple of hours or something.
Okay. Well, we can always start it that way and say, eh, this is too, this is too much, and let's, I mean, what do you think?
Okay, let's see.
Just sometimes you don't know if the meeting that night's going to be fulfilled with, and, and if we do, like, one at a time, like, three, I suppose three. You said three, right?
Well, you know, i- if it's one, two, three, I, I was suggesting three pages, 'cause we should be able to do that in a five to 10 minute add-on in a meeting.
Yeah.
But.
Well, we could do a little bit of both, I guess, is all I'm thinking, 'cause there's some that aren't that, are longer than others, right?
Well, you just get, go until we get tired. If it's a couple hour and a half or two hours, and that's it, well, next meeting.
Uh, let's see.
We're not nailed to our seats, in other words.
Well, why don't we, how, how soon do you guys wanna look at them?
I don't care.
How about, I mean, we don't have a meeting next Monday, how about next Monday?
Monday, yes.
Town elections is the next Tuesday, so I don't wanna get close to that.
No, please. Yes.
The not the mo, not the meet, no.
Yeah, so, so next week is the week of the 28th and March 1st. The week after that is town elections.
Okay.
The only thing is, will we, where will we, you're gonna give us the ones to review that will.
I'll give you, I'll give you, you said five.
Before, yeah, well, if, whatever you guys wanna do, um, before the 28th, though, right?
Yes. So we're talking 28th?
We, we would talk about them on the 28th and what changes we'd wanna make.
So we would just come and pick them up?
Or I could.
Cause we don't meet again.
Or get to nail them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
But the meeting will be on Monday.
That's a wonderful idea!
Yeah, so, so it would be the 28th.
They are on SharePoint, too, if you.
1:30 on the 28th?
If you're successful with that.
No, but what's that?
What, what time works for you?
Um, two, did you say two?
1:30, two, whatever.
Yeah, let's do two.
Two on the 28th?
All right.
Of course, that is Monday, see if I'm in all one piece.
Last day of February.
Ouch, this is when you say, Marlo, make sure you put it in your thing.
Policy work session.
Yeah.
And that's the 28th, right?
Two. Not AM.
Oh, I have something I.
Yeah, that'll leave you, right?
And that's 2:00 PM, did you say?
2:00 PM, yeah.
Let's, do you wanna just, oh, oh, how about we cap it 2:00 to 3:30?
Perfect.
Okay. And that's what we can get done?
I have one question, I totally forgot, 'cause I only wrote.
Do you wanna do the pre-motion to close the meeting at 3:30?
Who brought him?
All right.
Have we heard from anybody on the Close Pin Bridge and how they're coming along?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I called today and asked, well, actually, I emailed, um, Greg Goodrich today and, and said, because I've heard from. Yeah, that's a good question, I, I called today and asked, well, actually, I emailed, um, Greg Goodrich today, and, and said, because I've heard from, um, as you know, I told you.
My neighbors.
Your neighbor had, had contacted, uh, the planning commission, and he called me again today from the planning commission, said that she had asked him again. And so I emailed Greg Goodrich, and I said, would you please call me today, because I wanted to ask him, you know, where we are, what we're doing. And I also want to ask him to come in and meet with you.
That would be a great idea.
And I thought that that would be the time, where I would also tell Marilyn to come in.
Yeah.
And so that it would be, he did not call me back today. And, but he's usually pretty good about getting back to you, so that's, I'm not, but I, I am falling up on that, because I know Marilyn's anxious, I'm anxious, I mean, I'm.
Well, yeah, we want to know what's going on.
You know, and the thing, I mean, this sat at the state for six months.
And Dana can tell you, I've been asking about, you know, what do we need to do with who, when, for, like, a year now.
No, it is, it's, it gets, and I mean, the holes are not getting any smaller on that branch.
I think you're gonna end up having to get those, um.
Metal things.
Metal plates.
I agree, because I, I mean, when I can see through the hole in the, the rebar and see the river.
That, that was the case last year, too.
Well, I didn't notice that that much.
Yeah, Emmett did manage to fix it last year, but the, the fixes are now needing fixes around the fixes, the whole fixes.
And I'm not sure whether, I mean, come July, I don't think it's gonna be ready to go.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
That, that's the, the key worry.
Which they haven't everything really completed. Well, I don't, it's, whatever.
Anyway, so that's, that is what I'm trying to do with Close Pin.
All right.
And I'm just glad it's not another type of engineer that I'm.
Well, the only other thing I can say is, would they, I mean, we won't have another meeting until the twenty-eighth, could they come in the twenty-eighth before?
You mean for select board?
Yeah, for the, to see the select board in the daytime, maybe that's a good excuse to get here.
So.
If we're, if we're, then we'll just, if he could show up at two, and then get rid of him, and then we can work with whatever we want. But that'll, that won't give him an excuse, well, it's at night, he, he should be working, so then he could just take a trip.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because your next meeting is scheduled for, your regular meeting is scheduled for March seventh, which is the night before town elections. And this, and this hall won't be available, of course.
I'm gonna go to the conference room.
Because there'll be, I mean, so, did you want to meet on the seventh in the conference room downstairs?
It's not like we have a big crowd here.
I mean.
I'm, I'm doing two subjects at once, I'm sorry.
That, that makes sense to me.
Or the other thing, we could hold it on election night, day, downstairs, and then we, because we have to be here anyway, so why can we do that, can we do that, is that legal?
No, I think you're supposed to be up here, um, helping people, whatever.
I don't think we do, because.
We'll just sit over there in the corner and have sort of.
These are things I don't know anything about, that approach hammering.
Be the greeters, but I don't know what, I don't remember the legalities of it, because that's just what I've always expected to do, is go be a greeter for the whole day.
Well, I would rather get something done, so.
We could come over at five o'clock to my house, it gets fun then.
Well, I was thinking a pub or bar, no, just.
The, the town election day would be a great day for us to read through the policies if we haven't, that we haven't gotten through.
Well, you mean, in between?
And just jot notes on it, and then we'll, we'll be completely ready for the next meeting afterwards.
Oh, that's, that's okay, too, whatever, sounds, I'm just trying to condense a little, you know, some things.
I mean, if, if it were, you know, the next presidential election, I, I wouldn't expect we'd have time to do that.
No, 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 right, no, but this is usually.
But town election is usually pretty chill.
Yes, yes, so.
So what do we, so we're proposing to, we'll, we are meeting and greetings, but at the same time, in between some of the slow time, we can review some of our policies.
And we'll just make marks on it, and, you know, we can all convene at an actual meeting about it afterwards.
So.
We'll do our homework here.
I'm lost.
Dana's lost, get him back to earth.
Okay, you're still having a work session next Monday?
Yes.
At two?
Yes.
You're gonna have a regular meeting on March seventh, which is Monday, and we're gonna probably do it downstairs?
Correct.
Monday evening?
Yeah.
And then, the next day, March eighth, you're gonna have a work session to kind of, you know?
No, the, March eighth is, is the town election, and the suggestion is that we do our homework here, which is just to individually look through the policies that you send us. So that we're prepared to talk about them at the next meeting.
All right. Work's moving.
Okay.
That's all right, you'll all be in the same rooms, we'll have to follow you around for minutes, anyway. I mean, it's an election, so that's Michelle's job, right?
In a ballot, ballot people.
At least, at least for the, the town meeting it is, I don't know what happens for the election. Anyway, I mean, it's noticed, we all have to be here, so. Anything else before whatever else you wanted to bring us?
For going through that, I would like to have two non-public sessions, please.
Okay.
The first one, I would like it non.
Wait, does he have, did you have to get off the?
Not just yet, but we will.
Oh, all right.
I would like the first non-public to be under RSA ninety-one A colon three two A for personnel.
Okay, and the second one?
The second one is going to be under RSA ninety-one A colon three two C for reputation.
Okay, all right. So, the standard for anyone out there that watches these, we will go through our non-publics and then immediately close the meeting afterwards. So there will be nothing further to see, or streams continued or restarted. So I would move that at nine oh seven, we enter non-public session under personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.